Tonight you are faced with a decision between the existing lawyer for the district, who has a long track record here, and a new lawyer, whose credentials you have all examined. While I cannot claim intimate knowledge of the prospective legal counsel, I'm aware of the track record of the existing lawyer from personal experience. To her credit, Regina Tate, your existing lawyer, is a tenacious, absolutely tenacious litigator. She spares absolutely no effort to win. Yet her aggressive approach in our district has included tactics that, in my opinion, have been injurious to community. You can imagine that when IBM sues Intel, aggressive legal tactics may be desirable. They're just another amoral component of litigation between two titans of industry playing on a level playing field. But when analogous tactics are used by a publicly financed attorney hired by you, the school committee, against a family that repeatedly expresses desire to mediate rather than litigate a dispute, those tactics are absolutely immoral. There's no question about it. That the Amherst Regional School District was enabled by counsel to behave in such a manner informs us of what type of lawyer the district has been using. My understanding of your commitment as a school committee member is to support community. Yet your current attorney's tactics are contrary to that goal. The fact that families and children become victims of such tactics is of no apparent concern to current counsel, nor is the fact that even when substantial sums are proffered to litigants in settlement, it is our community that must pay for that in addition to any legal fees. Furthermore, the acrimony Miss Tate's efforts engender persist long after the end of litigation. That her efforts may stifle communication between schools and families, fracture community relationships, and isolate vulnerable families is apparently just collateral damage in the pursuit of legal supremacy. After all, Attorney Tate doesn't live here. She does not pay taxes here, nor does she have to live in the community where the impact of her aggressive tactics are absorbed.
That's three minutes, Michael.
Okay, I have two lines. Tonight I urge you to choose an attorney to replace Miss Tate, who is responsive to the spirit of our community, is an effective mediator, and seeks to resolve differences in a manner that leaves community whole at the end of the process. It is my hope that you choose someone committed to providing a service that prevents rather than stimulates community-shattering litigation. Your community is counting on your conscience. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Elaine?
Elaine Fromm-Hough for Amherst. I know that this committee is gearing up to choose a permanent superintendent, and I just want to share some brief thoughts about that. A month ago, my oldest child started in the middle school, so now I'm in my eighth year as a parent with children in the school district. And from that perspective, I just want to say that recently, really since Maria Garrick took the helm of the school district, I've noticed an increase in receptiveness and even enthusiasm for positive changes here in this district. And more importantly, in her short tenure, I have seen positive changes from her selection to a highly regarded curriculum director, top-notch administrators, and her willingness or push to improve the accessibility of a superintendent to parents. This last attribute has been evidenced repeatedly, again most recently by the appointment of an ombudsman, something that has been long sought, and who it was reported will give particular attention to parents of African-American and Latino students. Most significant to me is that our administration doesn't just listen to parents' suggestions and concerns, but actually acts upon them. I also appreciate that she's a decisive leader, saying no when that's necessary, but implementing changes when she believes that's necessary. I just want to call attention or mention something that I think a lot of you have witnessed or at least heard about, but perhaps the wider community is not aware, that Superintendent Garrick received a standing ovation from the faculty at their first day back to school this year. And I've spoken to several staff, some of whom have been in this district for decades, and none of them could remember this ever happening before. And I asked them why they thought that she received this unprecedented honor, and I was told that it was an appreciation for the way Miss Garrick demands accountability of her staff, but at the same time shows that she understands that her staff are dedicated and competent professionals, and in this way she inspires them, sorry, thank you, to strive higher, to accept changes because of their belief that they're all working towards the same goal. So I know that right now regions all around here are looking to fill superintendent vacancies, given all Superintendent Garrick's demonstrated attributes as an education leader. And I just want to mention also the fact that she's a woman who would bring an element of diversity to an office that's been dominated by men. I wanted to speak today because I don't really want to lose Miss Garrick to another town, and this is my final sentence, Rick, sorry. I also, so I want to encourage her to apply for that permanent superintendent position. And I just want to close by saying that although we can search the nation, as we did two years ago, for another superintendent, I believe we will be hard-pressed to find a person, a better person, to actually put into place the continuous improvements to the school district that I think we all agree we want. Thanks for your time.
Rebecca?
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Woodland, a member of the Amherst community. But it's through the lens of, I'm a professor of educational leadership at UMass Amherst, and it's really through that lens that I wanted to speak on the topic that Elaine just brought up, which is the impending search for a new superintendent. And I guess I'm a little unclear on whether it's an impending choice to, whether the committee is going to make a choice to actually search, or whether it's decided it's definitely going to search, and now it's what firm it's going to pick. So I think I'm speaking for the former, and I want to speak to the fact that I believe that the committee making a decision to move forward with the search is both unwarranted and unwise, and so I want to speak to those two things. In my position as at the University of Massachusetts in educational leadership, I've had the opportunity, and continue to do so, to work with superintendents all over New England. I worked in Vermont, Connecticut, Massachusetts, and I currently work in some very high-performing districts such as Simsbury, Connecticut, and Long Meadow, Massachusetts. And also, I was head of the team for Massachusetts, the state of Massachusetts, headed up the team that put together and developed the new standards for Massachusetts superintendents in the state of Massachusetts. So I'm acutely aware of what our state and national leaders expect of their superintendents. So it's really through that lens I wanted to address this topic. So, one, I believe it's unwarranted to move forward with a search because there is a person that this community currently has at the helm that has nine years of senior leadership experience in this district. She's twice as an interim superintendent, the second time as a seven-month standing interim superintendent, who I can tell you from my experience has accomplished more in seven months as a leader than I see most new superintendents who have never done this before accomplishing in three to five years. So I just wanted to present that perspective. I want to say that it's unwise. I don't think it's fiscally responsible to move forward with spending $25,000 to $50,000 in a search. I think it's unwise because it's highly likely that the search could end up having ramifications and causing turmoil that we don't want. And lastly, I can't speak for Maria, but I do know that of all the other superintendents that I know of, and our program prepares people to assume leadership positions, I can't imagine why Maria or somebody in her position would want to join a search, which is, if this committee chooses to move forward with the search, it is essentially a vote of no confidence for its current superintendent, which would really be a shame. And I think, I implore you to call off the search.
Joshua?
Hi, I'm Joshua Goldstein, better known to most of you as Solomon's dad, but my disclaimer is Solomon is not any part of this issue, so he doesn't want me implying ideas. I want to talk, I'll see if I can keep it to one minute, on school start times. There are a number of people who have gotten interested in this issue. You've probably heard about it, Northampton's moving forward on it, the possibility of starting later for teenagers, middle school and high school. And that policy of starting school later has measurable positive benefits, both academic and non-academic, but it's also a really complicated issue that involves a lot of different constituencies, from buses to sports to elementary parents. So what's on your agenda here is to appoint a task force or set in motion a task force where we can bring together these different constituencies, hash out the issues without taking up your time. Happy to do it some other way where we all sign petitions and come with crowds to your meeting, but I think it's better to work this through and come back with you later in the year with some specific proposals and see where the glitches are and where the resistance might be and maybe get some consensus on it. There's basically two ways you can do it. You can either move everything in the district half an hour later, or you can switch the elementary and high school starting times. So you may look at a couple of different proposals down the line. And the issue is urgent because it's part of the teacher contract negotiations that are going on this year. So that's very important. If you don't act on it quickly, then you can't for several more years. And that's why I want to get the spade work going as quick as we can to get the issue moving forward. Also, the different elementary schools are affected, and that means the Pelham Elementary and Amherst school committees at a minimum would also need to approve this. So there's some urgency to it. And thank you for your time.
Claire Bertrand.
I'd like to thank you first of all for letting us comment. I can't stay for your whole meeting, so briefly, I did want to tell you that I'd love to see the task force move forward to study later start time for the older students now having a teenager. It's, yeah. I don't want to be on a task force, but I'd love to have some people work on it, and I'd be willing to work to get other, you know, parents involved. And the other thing I'd like to say, I see that next to superintendent's search firm is a vote. So I take it this is going forward, and you're finding a firm to do that work. So I would like to just publicly state that I feel like we have a great insider candidate. It's mid-September, the very hard work of transitioning three, four schools into three has gone beautifully, and our kids are settled and well at the elementary level. That's also true, I have a high schooler, probably at all the schools. So we have somebody who's doing a really good job, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate, you have to be unbiased as a committee, but that the public would love to hear from Miss Garrick, her vision for our schools, and also hear an evaluation of the work that has been done by her, which I know, that's also, honey, you have a busy agenda, that's also on your agenda. So thank you for that work, and I look forward to seeing that process unfold.
Is there anybody else? One more? Okay, sorry. Two more.
Good evening. I'm Alice Swift, a member of the Amherst School Committee back in the eighties for two and a half, or two, six and a half years. I was appointed before I was elected, twice. I'm speaking in favor of the school committee going ahead and offering the position to the person who is so obviously appropriate for the job of superintendent, and that is Maria Garrick. I've developed great respect for Maria and feel she has shown herself to be the right person for the job in reports of her activities since becoming interim superintendent. I've been so impressed by how much she has accomplished in a short time, how quickly she's reached out to the students, staff, and community, providing stability and demonstrating her commitment. I've been impressed, too, by her good ideas and her long-range planning. She has the vision, the energy, and the leadership qualities to ensure the continuing high quality of the schools that we've been proud of. She's also demonstrated that she has the mettle to lead the schools in this tough and critical environment, where people are quick to point out problems or weaknesses and ignore the successes. After all the instability in recent years, we now have someone whom the staff are fully behind, as evidenced by that four-minute standing ovation that Maria received on the first day of school. She's demonstrated the ability to bring out the best in them, and you shouldn't dismiss that lightly. If Maria could be persuaded to take the job on a permanent basis, she could do much more without threat of it being undone within a few months. How demoralizing it would be to have another search indicating a lack of confidence in her. There is energy in the school system that will be lost if another search is undertaken. It will be harder for staff to give 100% for something that will be cast aside under a new superintendent, another new superintendent. I hope you will follow the example of the select board, who are being praised for their wisdom of hiring the person who has shown himself to be the right person for the job of town manager. Having had a recent search, they recognize the futility of starting another one. What are the chances of finding good candidates now when Amherst has a reputation for being hard-on superintendents? What are you looking for that we don't already have in Maria? And where are the chances we would find, what are the chances we would find someone better? Who would want to take a chance on accepting the job? Is it worth the money involved in starting a new search? You need to justify that expense. If there is a new search, it's imperative to have community input into what we want in a superintendent and the choice of the particular individual in order to ensure community support for whoever is hired. Thank you.
One more, and that's it.
Hi, my name is Joan Snowden. I'm a teacher at Amherst Regional High School. I'm entering my 15th year, and I am briefly going to support remarks people have made previously recommending that you think long and hard about going on with the search for superintendent. I'm not here representing anyone other than myself, but many teachers at the high school feel the same way, that we are now entering a period of stability with strong leadership, someone who showed administrative skills, who's forming coalitions, who's starting initiatives that are going to align the school K through 12, improve curriculum, improve instruction. We're really excited about the things they're starting, and the idea that it's all going to end after a year, or that Maria's going to have to be distracted by her work by going through this process is really upsetting to many teachers. So please think long and hard about this. Talk to your staff, talk to community members. Don't just go forward without really reflecting. Thanks a lot.
You did have your hand up. Okay, one more.
One minute. Hi, I'm Farshid Hager from Lambert. I'm also a parent. I want to just say a comment about the legal counsel. First of all, I came to the meeting tonight to be in the audience in case there were any questions about the history, since I was in fact the person who had the most contact with legal counsel on behalf of the school committee. I understand you may not wish to, but I'm here to address those questions if you wish. On April 13th of earlier this year, Steve Rifkin made a motion not to have Ginny Tate's firm, in fact, included in the list of firms to be considered by the committee, and Catherine Sanderson seconded it, and that motion failed. Steve and Catherine were the only ones who voted for it. So that's all public knowledge. But the public didn't know at the time that earlier, Miss Sanderson had asked me to carry a message to the superintendent, Maria Garrick, to the effect that if she didn't stop the middle school principal's search, and if she did not stop the curriculum director's search, that she would go after the.
I really object.
Yes?
You know what? Let him speak. Let him speak. Everyone has their First Amendment right. Go ahead. We are looking forward to bated breath.
So, I mean, it's up to you, Rick. You're the chair, you can tell me.
I think not. I think not.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Okay. So that's the end of public comment.
If I may, I would like to add my voice to what's already been said about a truly remarkable opening day of school. I had the honor of attending for the first time in seven years the opening day convocation. And after having spent 30 years attending those convocations, it was a remarkable and extraordinary show of support. Before Maria could even open up her mouth, the entire auditorium stood up and gave her a standing ovation. And as someone who's been there and witnessed the lack of that kind of support, and you have my back, I have your back, I think it would be a real mistake to just simply toss that off as some kind of purely emotional gesture on the part of the staff. True, it was that, but I think it symbolizes something much deeper and much more profound in terms of the relationship that's been established between the staff and between the superintendent. I think what was also remarkable was that event was bookended at the end of the day by an unprecedented event on the town common, which I think Maria also deserves a considerable amount of credit for, for putting together an awful lot of people, working together to bring about an event at which something in the neighborhood of 500 people attended. And the only sad part about that entire event was that for some reason, and I fully don't understand, would love an explanation at some point, the local media, the local press seemed to have fell, fall down on this one, in that I don't recall any coverage of it at all in the local newspapers, and I think that was an unfortunate consequence. But nevertheless, an extraordinary and truly memorable event. Thank you, Maria.
Okay, we're way over on the comment time, so any more comments? Superintendent's update?
I'd like to just start briefly with, oh, let me hand this out, I'm sorry. Apologize, I always forget that. So I'd like to, I'll try to be brief. I have, again, written these down, and they will appear tonight on the superintendent's link, so people can go and review. So I'll hit some highlights, and then people can read for themselves. I would like to mention for the student-teacher spotlight, the Amherst Regional Middle School Chorus has been selected by the American Composers Forum as one of the three Choral Quest Ensembles for this school year. It's an educational initiative by the American Composers Forum, which has commissioned artist in residence, Alice Parker, to compose a new piece of work specifically for our middle school. And she will choose to work with, she chose actually to work with Dave Rainan, and this is, I guess, quite an honor, and the middle school chorus specifically. And this piece of work that she has composed will be performed at one of our spring concerts. So I just want to acknowledge that for the work of our students in the chorus and Mr. Rainan. In terms of our math update, I did want to mention that Dr. Chen has been again in the district this week. He visited numerous classrooms in every school, and he's meeting, has met with principals at the secondary level. He met with a community group on Monday evening. And the K-16 Math Council will meet on September 23rd, which is Thursday this week, yeah, from 3:30 to 5:00, that they're going to put the finishing touches on the online surveys so that parents can give their feedback as well on this process. I wanted to mention that we are very, very pleased that Barry Brooks, who's a retired middle school guidance counselor, has agreed to serve in the role of an ombuds person for the middle school, I mean, for the middle school, for the regional schools, and for Amherst and Pelham. This was a suggestion that came, I believe, from the community through Dr. Ray Taylor, who came to our district to conduct an equity audit. And I believe community members, maybe specifically the radar group, mentioned that this is something that they have raised for a number of years, and they'd love to have someone serve in this role, to have an independent, impartial, confidential resource to assist parents and community members in terms of resolving complaints in school-related issues. So Mr. Brooks will be starting the first week of October, and he will be setting the office hours. He'll be working two afternoons late in the day, early evening, and he's happy to accommodate meeting people at the school or meeting people off campus as well. So we're very, very pleased that he's choosing to join us. On the 30th of September, Dr. Ray Taylor will join us again with our data team, and we will continue our work at looking at our MCAS data as well as other school-related district data. And we are going to look at our data through the lens of equity, access, and excellence, and we will be determining at that time some outcome goals for our school district as a whole, as well as specific school goals and help the principals, and we're going to have a conversation together around specific interventions to address areas where we see a gap between our mission statement and our performance. I'd like to mention in terms of our Minority Student Achievement Network events, our students will be traveling to Bedford Central School District, and I believe they'll be traveling with Mary Custard and Kristen Iverson. I don't know what the date is. Next week.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Saturday.
Great. So we look forward to the information, the experience, first of all, that they will have, but also the information they'll bring back to us. We will be hosting a mini-conference through MSAN in November in our district. We are partnering with Brookline Public Schools, and they're joining us to host in our district a conference to look at English learner education, or English language learners. So we're just in the beginning of developing that conference, so as more information comes available, and Marta is helping us with this initiative and with this work. So we'll make sure that we get information out to the community.
November 4th.
November 4th and 5th. Thank you, Marta. There's, there are a few dates up here that I just will mention briefly. We have another educational roundtable discussion at ACTV, who we thank greatly for their support. They've been wonderful with accommodating us sharing some information with the public. And we're having Dr. Ray Taylor and Dr. Guevara join us on the 30th in the afternoon to tape a discussion around equity, access, and excellence. So we're looking forward to that as well. And we do have a schedule for the year. We're going to try to have two discussions per month. So as we set those up, we'll put them on the web. And again, if there are specific ideas from the public around these topics for us to, you know, bring to the public, or short videos, you know, just if there's a specific question that you'd like a brief, two-minute video explaining, the community, we're asking that people send in those thoughts to Debbie West-Morland so that she can get them back out. Five College Advisory Council, as I mentioned, in August, that I will be meeting with professors and representatives from the Five College to sit with us and to talk about different partnerships and initiatives that we currently have in place, to catalog those, to strengthen those, and to expand our partnerships so that we can access the resources from the wider higher ed into our schools, but also so that we can provide a service to higher ed and an opportunity for people to spend some time in our schools and for us to spend some time with higher ed. And also, I wanted to make a special thank you to Amherst College President Tony Marks, who's agreed to expand the strong partnership that already has existed between the public schools and Amherst College. As many of you know, he, the college has sponsored our pipeline program partnership. In addition, he has, we, through our conversations, we have been identifying potential barriers to maintaining and developing and expanding partnerships. And one of the barriers we identified was the need of an administrative assistant to really hold the partnership information, to be able to map what the needs are in the schools for community volunteers, for higher ed volunteers, interns, practicum students, and then to also gauge the availability of the community and make a match, basically. So find out what our needs are, what's the community's interest, so that we can actually access the amazing skills that are in our community and people who are really wanting to work with us. And right now, we're really not able to efficiently do so. So the college president has agreed to fund that position, and he is also agreeing to look at funding a part-time grant writer for us as well, because we need to bring additional resources into our schools. And I think, I'd love to just mention one more, two more, and then I'm going to ask Marta to speak briefly about one topic of MCAS. I want to thank the student news, who I have Josh in, Joshua Wolfson in the audience, for asking to interview me on a specific topic, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with students. So I want to thank you publicly, Josh, and again, interested anytime. And they're also willing to brainstorm with us around student, student news opportunities and getting, having more student voice in our decision-making. And the last topic I'd love to mention myself is that I've included some information in the packet, which are, there are two press releases. One that outlines Dave Rainan's work with the composer I mentioned earlier, but also is the press release that describes and defines the UMass School of Education and the Amherst Public School Partnership. We've been, have already begun working with UMass on improving instruction in two key ways, which is developing collaborative teacher teams that examines student achievement, and then also to observe and analyze instruction using a process called instructional rounds. So it's really exciting work. We've already started, and we're seeing really exciting changes in our schools. So that is, there's lots of information there for you as well. So Marta, would you just make a mention?
So very briefly, we wanted to say that we look forward to coming back at some point to really delve into the MCAS AYP information. I mean, this is not the moment to do it, but we wanted to acknowledge that we have received scores, that scores have been mailed home, that we've, you know, began the process of looking at that data, and looking at the data through many lenses, and we look forward to having a partnership with Dr. Ray Taylor. I have to say that in terms of good news, there's a lot to celebrate. We, our district continues, and talking about the region only now, continues to do really well to have very high performance and improvement rating as compared to the state average. We do really well with the aggregate. We do really well with the aggregate. And there's a lot to celebrate there. We can go into specifics. And then we also have some challenges. So it's a complex book of many chapters. And I think that, you know, we're all committed to continuing to look at ways to improve, you know, and we call it proficiency and beyond. And we're committed to really supporting, yeah, just.
That's great work.
Yeah. Because our district, you know, we won't stop until the needed student goes to proficiency and beyond. And we owe it to our community and to every child. So we look forward to, so the high school principal and his staff and the middle school principal and staff, along with the district staff, coming and discussing those. But clearly, there's a lot to celebrate and a lot of great work happening and then there's some challenges, so I think we can leave it at that.
And we hope that maybe next meeting you'd like us to come back with some specific PowerPoint information for the committee.
That'd be great.
Any questions on the superintendent update?
Great. Thanks for that. I had a question about the math review. So I understand that the parent survey is going to go out soon via Survey Monkey. And I wondered about the work involving the comparison districts. And is that being done in-house or is Dr. Chen doing that? Or is how is that? I think this committee and the Amherst committee had both added those two elements. So I just thought, I know a lot of parents in the community are interested. I attended the meeting on Monday and we could just get a brief update on that.
All of the comparison benchmark districts have been contacted. The curriculum directors or assistant superintendents who are whoever's in charge of curriculum have been contacted. We know the programs that each of the districts is using. And I've compared in-state MCAS results of each of the benchmark comparison districts to ours.
You're conducting that internally. That consultation.
Yeah.
Internally.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the superintendent update?
I don't have a question, I have a comment to say thank you so much for seeking out and building the Five College partnerships. And it's really clearly benefiting us to, I mean, we have potentially two new staff positions that will help coordinate several other students to be working with our students. So many more hands-on folks in the schools. So I think, just kudos to you for that. It's wonderful.
Thank you. And I actually find this something that makes a lot of sense and it's actually not all that difficult to make connections with people. And people are very interested in helping and working with us.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to superintendent search firm. I guess I'll turn it to Steve.
Thanks, Rick. So the Superintendent Search Firm Selection Subcommittee met, put together a scope of work and solicited in a set of minimum criteria that included having completed five successful superintendent searches in Massachusetts and having been working in this capacity for at least five years. We solicited quotes from the four firms that had been identified at our meeting and was our charge. Ray, not Ray Associates, not Roy Ray, emailed me and let me know that they would love to bid on the work, but that they didn't satisfy the minimum criteria. And I said that, you know, unfortunately, those were our criteria selected by the committee. And so they responded that then they were not going to prepare a quote, but would be happy to do so if circumstances were to change. Two of the firms did not submit bids and we've ended up with one proposal of services from Hazard Young Associates. This is a firm that has extensive experience in Massachusetts, having most recently worked in the Newton School District Superintendent Search. And I think I provided the proposal to all the members, that I received it a couple of days ago. And we had, we didn't want to distribute anything until at least 5:00 today to make sure that it was fair comparisons for everyone. I think that members should look through the proposal. The proposal is for $19,000. It, I believe, satisfies everything that we had in our scope of work. And they offer some additional services that would be up to $26,500, I believe, which is far beyond what our scope of work is. And I don't think that, I'm in a position to recommend, but I think we have to have a brief discussion. But they are the low, they are clearly the low bidder as the only bidder. And I am going to vote to support hiring them to do the search.
Can I turn to Kristen?
Can you just give us a sense? I know you, the committee was, Erv, Rick, were you on the committee? Who was the subcommittee? I can't remember.
Debbie.
Sorry. Debbie, can one of you just tell us what the specs were that went out? Which maybe I should remember from last time.
I have them ready.
That you guys decided on those, right? Could you just tell us what those were?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Interested parties are invited to submit quotes for providing the following services. Assist the search committee in defining the leadership needs of the school system, including solicitation of feedback from school and community stakeholders through a public forum, through a review of previously collected community feedback from the last superintendent search, and the consideration of any legacy issues that might affect the future success of the new superintendent. Assist the search committee in developing a job description for the position of superintendent of schools. Conduct networking and other search activities to generate a diverse pool of highly qualified prospective candidates, including candidates who may not have pursued a traditional superintendent career track. Assist the search committee in screening applicants, verifying credentials, and checking references. Assist the search committee in crafting interview questions and setting up the interview process. Assist the search committee in the final selection process and consult during the contract negotiations with the candidate selected. Continue to work on this matter until the hiring of a superintendent is complete.
Thanks.
Kristen.
So given, thank you for doing this. I appreciate it. And I know you, I know you did this on the behest of the vote at the last meeting. But in line with many of the comments I've heard tonight, I would like to make a motion. And the motion would be that we abandon the broad search for superintendent and offer a permanent position and a, well, I'll leave the years open, but a contract to the interim superintendent for a permanent.
Second.
That would be out of order because we haven't, I'll say it's out of order because we, this is, because the region vote also includes the union. The union hasn't met or had a chance to discuss this or had a motion to this effect. So it would be out of order.
Kip and Debbie.
Just to point a clarification, you, the chair is the only person who can declare a motion out of order, so I'm going to.
That's not correct.
So one person at a time.
Do we have a motion or not?
I think we have a motion. I don't know, I think you can make a motion whenever you want.
It's been seconded, correct?
Right. So now we're discussing that motion.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. I'm not, I'm a little confused about what Erv just said about why it's out of order because I don't remember any, I don't remember the regional committee having a discussion or a vote on whether to go forward with the search. I certainly know the union didn't. So, I mean, maybe they, we did when I wasn't, was not on the committee at the time. So I'm not, I'm trying to understand what exactly, how this is supposed to be working. So.
There are two comments here. One, I think that we need to examine the policy in relationship to going out for searches as it looks at our affirmative action policies. That needs to be examined and looked at. Two, I think that to bring forward a motion at this particular point in time to stop the search before it even begins. And also, when this could have been voted on much earlier before the subcommittee got to work to go out and look for a search firm. To do that at this time is a disservice knowing to the subcommittee, but also is not, you know, really a deliberative thing in relationship to how this really affects our policy. And no one is said to look at and say, hey, is this in line with the, any policies that we have in our policy manuals as involved a search? And also, we chose an interim superintendent. We voted on interim superintendent. It was agreed that there would be an interim superintendent. You don't go out, you don't vote on having an interim superintendent and then say, all right, we're not going to have an interim superintendent, we're going to vote on stopping the search.
So Kristen.
So I believe you just spoke to the motion, whether you are interested in it or not. But I would say that in, also, whether this is fair to the subcommittee or not, for one, I was a person who, at the last committee meeting, voted in favor of the search specifically because, not because I had any questions about the qualifications and competency of our current interim superintendent, but specifically because of the affirmative action concern. And I would like to speak to that later, I think, because I'm not sure that we're, I don't know where we are in this discussion, actually, and I would like guidance from you.
Yeah, there is a motion on the table, so we should be discussing that motion.
Point of information.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, in our arrangement, the Union 26 and the region vote to select a superintendent. The Union 26 meeting is not convened right now. So I think, I think in that sense, this is not in order. And it's out of order. And I think that we can't have a discussion and a vote without this being a joint meeting of the region and Union 26. And that joint meeting needs to be announced 48 hours in advance. And that's not happening. I think that what we could do is we could have a vote to not hire the search firm. I mean, that's, I think, is Rob Detweiler here? Right? So members can vote to not select the low bid if they so choose, I believe.
Okay, so your options are, you can take the low bid or you can declare a failed process. I think you have five days to accept the low bid. So you don't want to do it tonight if you're going to meet the next five days. But at this point, if you don't do that, you declare a failed bid and you can always go out, it's not a bid, I'm sorry, quote, and seek another round of quotes at your convenience. And as long as I have the floor, this is a technicality, we're talking about the quote coming in at 19,000, but with options up to 26. Two caveats. One, you can never go above 25 or you have to start the process over again. And you get, before you hit that, you, once you sign the contract and you have to sign it at the quoted price, you can only amend the contract 10% unless, without going out for another process. Just put that in the hopper, too.
Sorry. Steve and then Kip.
Okay, I move that we.
Well, we have to figure out if this motion that's on the floor is good or not. What should I?
I would adapt the motion so it would not be higher, I believe. An offer, I would say we move, I don't know how to state this in correct Robert's Rules order, so maybe you could help me.
This isn't about Robert's Rules, it's about whether we need Union 26 here, and it seems like we do, so I do think the motion isn't appropriate. Debbie.
So I'm still confused about the role Union 26 plays in this. So do we need Union 26 in order to select a search firm? Do we need Union 26 in order to not select a search firm? That's what I'm not understanding, what role that all plays.
Steve.
I'd like to answer that. The, what we have done in the past that we'll do and presumably are doing today is to allow the region to run the search. So the towns of Amherst and Pelham, representing the elementary schools, have designated to the region to be the entity that runs the search. In order to select a superintendent, that superintendent must be selected both by Union 26 and by the region. So the region conducts the search, but in terms of actually voting for a superintendent, that superintendent must be voted on by both the union and the region.
Anybody else? Catherine.
So I think that Kristen's made a motion, it's been seconded, and I think as Steve said, if people feel that that's the best decision, then they should vote against hiring the search firm. And that will be very simple and that will be very clear. And if people feel that that's not the best way to go, then they should vote for hiring the search firm. I do believe that it would be appropriate for members who had wanted that to occur to have suggested it to Union 26 so that Union 26 could have also had input on it. But I believe it's time to vote and we should vote on the motion, I think, the Kristen's motion. So I think we should vote on it.
One, I think that there's some confusion here. And we should just read the motion because the motion is separate from some things people are mentioning.
Kip.
Debbie.
Oh, okay.
Debbie, read the motion.
Mr. and Mrs. made a motion that the school can abandon the search and offer permanent contract interim superintendent.
And that was seconded?
Yep.
Kip.
I'd like to speak to the motion. This is a very complex situation, even more complex by the introduction of Union 26 into the, into the party. But putting that aside for a moment, I think what we're really left with here is how much do we really want to put all of the communities that make up the region through this ordeal? And I think that's what we're really talking about. It's already, we started talking about this about 10 minutes ago. And my gut feeling, and for what it's worth, is that we're already beginning to elevate the level of contentiousness about this. And I think that's really unfortunate. I would hope that we could approve something this evening that would ensure that the interests of the four towns, the interests of the administration, the interests of the staff, and most importantly, the interest of the children who attend school in the district are supported. And if this is the motion that will accomplish all of that, then I am all for it. If however, if however, it also means that the interim superintendent does not have the full backing of this committee, then I think that's a very different story. I would not want to see the current interim superintendent put in a position right now where she doesn't have that support. So should this motion fail, I would be prepared to move that this decision tonight be tabled until such time as we've had an opportunity for at least a minimum of two public forums to hear what the town people want in both a search and more specifically, in a superintendent.
I'll speak to.
Both a motion.
I'd like to speak to this motion and I'd hope not to have to have any of this discussion. But in no way do I see a search as a no-confidence vote for Maria. I see it as the opposite, a confidence vote. Because logically, if she's the best candidate, she'll win. So, and this is very late to be doing this. If we were going to not do the search, we should have done this during the summer. It was clear at the last meeting that at this meeting, we're going to vote on a search firm, period. And it's not starting the search. We've started the search a while ago, really. So I'll be voting in favor of proceeding with a search, even though I think Maria's doing a fantastic job and I love the direction the schools are going in. That's nothing to do with it. I think we need to do this process the right way and not be derailing it at this point in time. Kristen and Catherine.
I don't feel like I'm derailing the process. I feel like the last, at the last committee meeting, we were discussing the search. There has not been adequate comment from the public about, should we go for a search? Shouldn't we go for a search? And after that discussion, I got a lot of public comment that said, please don't go for a search. Why are we wasting money? I had, and we have a fabulous superintendent in place now. So actually, I'm responding to what I've heard from the community members because that, this has been the space that, of time that we've had to do that. So I would say, to speak to the motion, that I, it, the process of a search, I think, is fine. I think also, the, we've had a precedent now in Amherst that we do and can hire people who are highly qualified. I think Maria has shown over and over again the concerns that we've had. She's addressed, she has opened up communication, she's dealt with instructional issues. I mean, I actually don't want this to be so much a referendum because enough people have said amazing things about our current superintendent. But I do want to say that I'm hearing from the community that they feel that it's fruitless to go out for someone different when we have someone wonderful already in the position. that they feel that it's fruitless to go out for someone different when we have someone wonderful already in the position. And so this was the, really the first opportunity when I could speak that.
I think it was, oh, boy, Irv, Steve.
I want to call the question on this.
Second.
All those in favor, look, we need a two-thirds vote for this, right?
Point of information first. I, I mean, I really think you have to, doing this is, you know, in the, given the configuration, I mean, Kip, it's, Union Twenty-Six isn't just...
Wait, 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 hang on, we, we have a motion to call a question.
I know we do, but I mean, even before...
Nobody can talk.
You can vote not to call.
So all those in favor of calling the question? So that's not two-thirds, so. So, Steve, what? Steve was, okay, Catherine next.
First, I, I mean, I'd like to say, Kip, with all due respect, Union Twenty-Six isn't just a sort of nuisance. We, we hire half the, we, we hire half the superintendent. We had a, we had a vote...
Let's not get into a Union Twenty-Six...
No, 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 it's not a Union Twenty-Six, the superintendent is fifty percent for the Region and fifty percent for the elementary schools, of which, you know, which is important. I think that at the, you know, at the vote in March for the interim, there was clearly a dis- a disagreement and a difference of opinion. Eighty percent of the Amherst School Committee voted against Maria Garret for interim. I think it's, Rick, I think it's unwise for you to make any comments at all about Maria Garret's performance. It's one of our fundamental jobs to talk about her performance and evaluate it seriously. I don't want to get into a situation where I'm disagreeing with you about a performance, I think it's inappropriate. I find it almost unbelievable that we're going to sit here and consider a superintendent when I don't think anyone in this committee has even seen a resume, that we have a person, you know?
What, what, this is, this is not...
No, 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 I mean...
This is, this is not upon the subject.
I, I think that, that we need to go through the process fairly and carefully and thoughtfully. The Amherst process involves someone who had been through the search and vetted in full and was a finalist for the position. And I feel very strongly that it's respectful to the, to the people in the communities to undertake a serious search, so that we have an opportunity to get the best possible person, and that person may be Maria Garret.
Okay, Catherine and Debbie.
So I'd like to say that I really appreciate Rick's thoughtful comments and Kip's thoughtful comments. And so my feeling is that, as I think Rick eloquently said, I believe that this committee in January will select the best candidate. And if that candidate is internal, we'll select that person. If that candidate is not internal, we'll select that person. I'm totally comfortable with having that process play out, and the community will have ample opportunity to contribute at multiple opportunities, including seeing finalists. I would also take Kip's comment very seriously, that I think that it's clear that there are members, perhaps only members from Amherst, who would have concerns about appointing a superintendent tonight without any warning to not only members of this committee, but actually to members of the community. Which, I guess in contrast to Kristin, what I heard from people who contacted me in March was, how could you select a superintendent for sixteen months without the public having a chance to comment? I can only imagine the comments I'm going to receive when I say permanent superintendent without having the community. On this agenda for tonight is not, should we appoint Maria Garret permanent superintendent or not? And, and if, if somebody had wanted it as an agenda item, I guess I would have hoped that that would have gone to Rick, and that could have been discussed at the last meeting, I think that would have been appropriate. I therefore would really hope that we could move on, we have other important stuff to do tonight, and I think we should at least vote this motion, and if, if, if other people disagree...
Debbie's next, Debbie had the floor next.
Okay, a, a couple of things. I, first, I have also been in support of this search, because I think it's, it's important to, to go through the, the process. I also, however, have gotten many phone calls since our last meeting with, from people in the public who are concerned about the financial implications, about the time and about the disruption. I think we need to listen to those concerns. I mean, those are reasonable concerns, we need to listen to them. That said, I don't think, I mean, it doesn't sound to me like it's even appropriate for us to be voting to appoint Maria tonight. So, I mean, I'm not even sure, it, it seems to me that we shouldn't even be voting on that motion, because it's not even legal, maybe, I, I don't know.
I'm happy to amend.
Okay.
But I think that we, as a committee, really ought to have a civil and thoughtful conversation about, you know, about the issues that the public have raised about this.
Okay. Kristin, you were next.
I'm happy to amend the motion, so it is not hire or offer or anything this evening, but to, I move to delay the hiring of a search firm until we can more appro- more adequately explore the possibility of keeping our interim superintendent.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those, discussion on the amendment.
I think we need a determination from the chair whether or not the first motion is in order or not. I mean, you may have made that, but I'd like to disagree for sure. And if it is in order, then we need to vote on the amendment first, and then follow up by voting on the amended or non-amended vote.
He's essentially correct, but...
I think, my personally, the way I think we should do this is to vote on the search firm or not, because that's what's on the agenda, not vote whether to do a search or not. Because that, I know, is okay to do.
Right.
And if you, if you didn't want to do a search, I guess you would vote not to use a search firm.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I...
So, but we, there's a motion on, on the table, so...
I believe you're calling it out of order. It seems that that's reasonable.
Yes, okay, I'm doing that.
Yep.
Uh, Steve then.
I move that we hire Hazard, Young, Etia and Associates for the sum of nineteen thousand dollars for the basic, um, um, search firm, basic consultation services that correspond to our scope of work that we listed when we solicited the vote.
Second.
Point of order.
No, I mean, from the order from the audience.
No, yeah.
On what basis is it out of order to have a motion to delay a vote? What, what is out of order about that?
It's, the Union Twenty-Six isn't here, I guess, and it's...
You never link those two.
I asked to delay the vote, first of all.
So, are we going to, are we going to talk about this motion on the floor?
Debbie.
Okay, so, Rob explained this, but the five days thing. So we have five days to, if we want this firm, we have five days to vote on this firm. Is that a correct statement? Can we say that, you know, we, we will, if, if we vote on this firm, is that automatically like signing a contract with them? It is?
Yes.
So, so we couldn't say that, you know, if we are going forward, you know, with the search, this is the firm we want, but we'd still like to have a discussion about, is, you know, is this the best approach moving forward? It's not out of the question?
If we choose a search firm, is that out of the question? I don't see why.
Because we basically are making contracts at that point.
Well... It's me, I am.
Yeah, Irv, go ahead.
I think, what I think is important for all of us here, including members of the audience and the school committee, to understand is that a search for a superintendent, which includes the interim, is absolutely essential. You do not want to have a superintendent who is not the committee's choice and who hasn't gone through the process. I, for one, voted against Maria in terms of interim, simply because I wanted the interim process, so she could go through the process, and she would become our superintendent. That's why I voted against it. We didn't have the chance to talk among ourselves and vote on her. The woman has extraordinary talents. She's demonstrated those over and over again. For people in the audience and other people to suggest that we abort a search and not do a search is a disservice to the community, to our, our committee, and to Maria. For some, for one person to say, well, because she is a female, that that would be a good thing. Well, let me tell you something, that is not a good thing. People who have merit stand on their own. She has merit. She's not some weeping willow out here. She can go through the process. She's a strong person. She will win or lose on the merits, not on the voices of those who wish to thwart the part, process.
Kip.
First of all, I think we have an amendment to a motion on the floor. I think we have an amendment to the motion on the floor that needs to be addressed. We need to call the question on the amendment to the original motion.
Yeah, I, I called that motion out of order.
The amendment or the motion?
Both.
The amendment.
So we're dealing with Rick's motion now, is that correct?
With Steve's.
Excuse me, excuse me. And that's been seconded?
It has been seconded.
I think I did.
Kip.
I, I would move to table the decision on a search firm until such time as the community has had an opportunity at least twice to provide the school committee with input on the nature of the search team that they wish, but more importantly, the characteristics and qualities of the superintendent that they want to manage the school.
Well, you, you were just making another motion, but there's a motion on the table.
I'm moving to table that motion. Point of order.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure that you can, I'm not sure that it's in order to move to table a motion that would effectively kill the motion, if there's a five-day limitation on when we can hire the search firm. If you move to table it and you know that that will then end the search process, I'm not sure it's in order to table that motion.
It has been seconded anyway.
Catherine.
I, I want to say I'm going to vote in favor of Steve's motion. I guess I'm really disappointed that this committee has, and I believe that Kip expressed in August his desire to not move forward with the search, so that, that was heard. I believe certain people may have the preference that we appoint the current interim permanent. I believe there are also people who don't feel that way, and certainly weren't given an adequate opportunity to comment. But I believe that this committee voted, and we have minutes reflecting that, to hire a search firm. There was a lengthy discussion, including the, with the qualities of different search firms, and the attributes of different search firms, and the cost of different search firms. And, and so I guess it feels to me very disrespectful to the process that this committee discussed, and I guess, I think it's a bad precedent that we can discuss something. So if we vote on a lawyer tonight, you know, within a month, I have a second thought about it, should I, you know, come up with a motion to undo that vote, I think it's unfortunate. I also think it's disrespectful, and I think that it's in counter to our intention to have a motion like that appear as a surprise. I think that that is in counter to our, our norms, and, and I guess, that's a major, major motion. I guess I would describe it as the most major motion I've ever seen at any school committee meeting, to have a surprise vote to appoint a superintendent. And so that, to me, feels really disrespectful. Again, as many people have said, I believe the best candidate would emerge in a search. And I believe a search is beneficial for support for that superintendent, whoever that superintendent is, from not only the school committee, but also the community. And I, I believe it would be a disservice to any candidate, internal or external, to not have the process play out. And I hope that we will allow the process to play out, and therefore, I am going to vote to accept the single day that we got that is within the votes that we asked for.
Debbie, Kip and Kristin.
Go ahead, Kip.
Earlier this evening, we were distributed a, a superintendent's search schedule for discussion. And is it appropriate to talk about this, given the motion on the floor?
I think after we do the vote on this motion.
Well, it's important to me to know, prior to my voting on this motion, whether or not we're going to be able to adjust this in terms of its length, the number of community forums that will provide us with input. This is all debatable.
That's all debatable.
Thank you.
So I, I just wanted to speak to Catherine's point a bit, because I don't consider it disrespectful. I think there are a lot of really wise people out on, in the community. And when I get feedback from people that I consider to be very wise and I value their opinion, it doesn't mean I always agree with them, but it does say to me that maybe this is worth discussing. So I think it's, it's almost a little more disrespectful for me to ignore it. That said, I also, you know, I, I really respect what Irv was saying about the search. I think Irv makes some, some very good points, and, you know, the fact that Maria is a really strong candidate. I would hope she would apply, and, and I do appreciate, Irv, those comments from you.
Kristin and...
I just want to comment again. First, I will say, I'm sorry that I possibly took the motion. I took the motion too far, and it was a surprise. I apologize for that. What, what I will not apologize for is that I asked us to delay the discussion around a search firm, because, again, yes, Kip, you made the comment, and we chose to go out for a search firm. There was, the, the, the aspects of public comment that have come to play so far have been around, we're talking about after we hire a search firm, what kind of superintendent do we want? We never began with the, the public forum around, do we want to go out for a search or not? Or do, are we happy and supportive with our current superintendent? So I would say that when I hear comments like that, I cannot ignore them. When I'm hearing from many, many, many people, I cannot ignore them. So I did raise an inappropriate motion by saying, let's, let's offer this. But I will not apologize for saying we should raise the, we should raise the question about whether we should go out for a search or not.
Okay, can we try to wrap it up, Steve?
Yeah, I just have one thing, and I appreciate your sentiments and opinions, and I, and I, and I respect them. I think, I think the important thing would be to at least email the chair and get some things on the agenda, so that, that all of us could be notified. But this is really feeling like deja vu back to March. And, and I think that the, that Catherine really hit on the major problem. That is, when you choose to search, you ensure that the community has voice, that the committee has a chance to really deliberate, to actually look at the resume, to seriously evaluate the record. I'm not in, I don't support what the town has done, because I think in order to, to, to do what they've done, you've got to take a very, very serious look at the record, if you're going to, to go with someone who is, who, who, you know, who hasn't gone through a full search. And I think, I totally agree with Catherine, that if Maria Garret is the choice of the committees, then that will really reaffirm and legitimize her choice as superintendent. And it does us no good as a district, because there are many, many people out there with a, a diversity of views, just as there are great diversity of views on this committee. And I think the integrity of the process, which should have occurred in March, and should definitely occur now, is to undertake a serious search to generate the best pool of candidates we can, and then, and, and then a, then a very serious discussion and a vote on that candidate.
Just one more, maybe?
I just want to call the question.
Second.
Okay, all those in, all those in favor calling the question? Okay, that's, question's called, so come to immediate vote.
Yeah, could you read the?
I, let me try. Is it Steve's?
Your's mine.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I didn't get the full name of the firm.
Why don't you pass this down, or pass yours over to Debbie?
What I have is, Mr. Richardson made a motion to have Hazard, Hazard, Young, Etia and Associates for the cost of nineteen thousand dollars for the basic superintendent service service, Ms. Anderson said.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Passed five to four. All right, we, oh, let's talk about the schedule briefly. So the schedule is, sorry...
We don't have...
I guess I can do this by email, because it's, it's scheduling, so I'll do this by email, if that's okay.
I respectfully disagree. I think we should vote on this, because I think what we're, one of the things that's emerged from what we've heard from the public this evening, and also from the conversation amongst the members of the school committee, is there's probably no more important decision than we're going to make choosing a superintendent. I'm not even sure that the budget challenges that decision, the importance of it. And I, I, I have heard from many, many constituents about their desire to keep Maria in the position. However, I think it would be a mistake on our part not to give as many opportunities to the public as we possibly can. There's nothing sacred about making this decision in January. We do not need to make it then. I think that we should have at least two public forums. Perhaps two in October, maybe one in October, one in November. But I think the minimum of two, to give everyone an opportunity to speak to the question of what qualities and characteristics do they want in a superintendent. Then and only then, in my opinion, the search committee that we just voted, the search company, will have a better idea of what we want and will come back with candidates that are more compatible with the list of characteristics that we've created. Thank you.
Catherine and Steve.
So I want to say two things to this. One, we've just chosen a search firm by a narrow margin. And one of the things a search firm is supposed to do is help us organize the search. That's specifically one of the things that they advertise doing. So I think right now, I think it'd be totally inappropriate to vote on this without some people talking at the search firm. I don't know if that's the chairs or the spec committee or whatever. But I mean, I actually think, you know, they do this and I could imagine them having recommendations about public input. I know some districts have had an online suggestion box, they might suggest that. But I mean, I think we're paying for it. I think we should get their input and their advice on how best to proceed and the timing. And Kip, with respect to your comment in terms of there is no future of this, I was actually, I'm the only member of this committee that served on the committee that hired Alberto Rodriguez. And at that time, we used a little bit of a later process and we actually lost finalists in January. So the finalists who had offers from other districts. And I actually believe that Kristin reflected that this current superintendent in Suthsbury had suggested that an earlier deadline was in fact advantageous. So again, I can't speak to that, I'm not a search firm. But it would certainly seem appropriate to me to charge the chairs or some subcommittee or a task force or some group of people, now that we have made this hire, to contact the search firm. I think frankly, to get their advice on where do you place the ad, how long should the ad run? You know, how many public forums, should you do something online? When is the superintendent's search season ripe, you know, et cetera? I'm also mindful that Mark Jackson, in fact, on March ninth, said that superintendencies have already been filled by March. You definitely want to do it before March, et cetera. So I just, I would say, I think it's premature to vote on this tonight. I appreciate the effort Rick did. But I really think we need to get advice from our search firm on this.
Steve was next.
Yeah, I just want to, I think Catherine's correct. And I think two things that are important. One is, the subcommittee met, Debbie, Irv, and I. And we settled upon one public forum. I think as Rob talks about, if we were to desire a second public forum and we wanted the search committee to help us do it, we could have an amendment to the contract and have them do it. I think that when Catherine refers to sort of talking to them and getting their advice, I think that what is going to more completely happen is they are going to come to Amherst and have discussions with us as a committee. And I think as part of those, and they will do that first, very early in the process, I think, right?
Okay, Debbie.
Yeah, so I...
I wasn't quite done, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
They're going to do that very early in the process and I think that's the appropriate time to have a discussion with them because I think that we have now selected a search firm, and I really agree with Catherine, for us to then start tinkering with the process. I think we are getting their guidance on what is going to be a very difficult process with clearly a board that's divided on how to go forward. And I think they're going to be invaluable in helping us move forward in a productive way.
Debbie says.
Okay, so I, first of all, I agree, I don't think we should be voting on this timeline. And I know that most people did not have a chance to look at this proposal because you got it like two seconds before the meeting. But they do talk in there about the various methods that they use to gain public feedback. And it's not just forums, it's focus groups and individual interviews. And so I absolutely think we need to be discussing this with the search firm.
Catherine and Kip.
So, yes, Debbie, indeed, I did not fully read this in the time allotted. And Kip, in reference to your point, on page four, it says, "In addition to the personal interviews", which I believe Debbie referred to, "HYA has developed an online survey that can be completed by any stakeholder in the community. The data collected from the online survey and the interviews with search committee members, staff, and the various stakeholders will be compiled in a leadership profile report, which will be presented to the search committee in both oral and written formats." So I actually feel, again, that this committee, in addition to holding public forums and interviews, has an online survey that I frankly imagine would be completed by a far greater selection of population than would be able to attend a focus group.
Kip.
Yeah, I'm just a little taken aback by the fact that we're having a discussion about whether or not we have this or that amount of public input to this. It seems to me that we would want to do whatever we can to maximize that. Secondly, I personally am not at all, I realize these people are the experts. We're paying them a lot of money that I don't think we have and can afford to pay them. Nevertheless, that one. But I do not want to give up my responsibility as an elected official to defer to this company to make a decision for me as to how they're going to go about soliciting public opinion. As long as this committee can assure me that we are going to have maximum input into how that process is created and the components of that process, I'll go along with it. But I want that commitment made this evening. I think that's very, very important and I think the members of the community need to hear that.
Irv.
You know, when I look at just this, it's October fourth through the seventh, we wanted, if you wanted to have more than one forum, I just don't want, for me, I think having the forums early to collect the data is from the interested, the interested audience, whoever they may be in the community, is advisable. I just don't want to see a forum here, now, and a forum later and a forum later because all you're doing is getting the same voices saying the same thing back over and over again. That's all you're going to do. And that is not advisable, all right? If we want to have forums, you want to have more of them, let's put them up front early and get them over with so we can get that input so that it informs our process, not later on in the process.
Kristin.
I would just agree with Irv. I think we should maximize public participation early in the process.
Catherine.
So I think it'd be appropriate for some members of this committee. I think Rick would be an appropriate person, perhaps the chair of Amherst as well, the chair of Palom. That would seem logical to me. It would be the chair of each of the three districts. Arrange a conference call with this forum, since they're in Illinois. And maybe answer some, you know, get some of these questions out about what their recommendation is. They've obviously been through this again, you know, before, what do they recommend? And I think if needed, we could schedule another regional school committee meeting to specifically discuss the information that was provided at that time. If we needed to then make a vote on the timeline or if they recommended something that needed full committee approval. So can I make a motion to, I don't know what you want to call it, task force, subcommittee? Is there some rule about what it should be?
Of the items on this list is that this firm is going to compile that public input and use it as well. So I understand the desire to have, you know, to have more forums and focus groups. And I just was trying to offer, you know, kind of caution in terms of that's going to make the price tag go up. And that we thought carefully about that in putting this together.
Debbie.
Okay, I guess I'm just, just a question though. You said it's going to make the cost go up, but, I mean, I did not read this early. You had more time with it than I did. But I didn't really see where all those items were spelled out, item by item by item. So I'm just not sure that's necessarily the case.
Irv and Catherine.
Can we just stay on the motion here? Because what we were saying, we were going to let the three chairs go and talk to the law firm. The search firm, can we just stay on it and just vote on it?
Right. Go ahead.
So I'm just going to say, on page three, Debbie, it says, at the bottom of page three, it says, "Up to two consultant days are allocated for the purpose of soliciting input through individual interviews, focus groups, and general forums, open to all stakeholders. It is recommended that the consultants facilitate interviews, focus groups, and general forums so as to maintain objectivity and determine what respective stakeholder groups value in the district, the issues they foresee and the characteristics they would like the new superintendent to possess." So it seems to me there are two days and we could allocate those two days with, you know, only public forums or some interviews or some combination of those. And again, yeah, I just would like their recommendation. So they might say, one public forum, five focus groups, seven interviews, and that's fine.
Okay, can we vote on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, unanimous? All right, we're done with that, hopefully. All right. Next on the agenda is law firm discussion. I guess we start this off with comments from the legal services committee.
I mean, yeah.
There were a number of people involved in this and I was the chair, I am the chair of the legal services. The last section of this, that was part of our charge, Catherine, let's, I will refer to Catherine.
So I think you all should have received, I think, a couple times now, information that I gathered and information that Kristin gathered. Does everybody have those? I think it went out in the agenda packets. In addition, Irv asked me at the last meeting of legal services subcommittee, which I think happened in August, to contact all firms and clarify, because I think there was a little bit of a lack of clarity at the last legal services subcommittee meeting about which firms were interested, willing, able to work on behalf of special ed. So all five firms that we saw were interested, willing, able to do work on general counsel, labor negotiations. It was not entirely clear from the presentations and the interviews whether that was true of all firms. So I am just going to report on that briefly. And that is that there are only two of the five firms that are interested, willing, able to serve on behalf of special education. One of those, not surprisingly, is our current firm, Murphy, has he too? They, of course, do that work and would be glad to continue. The only other firm of the five that we interviewed that's willing to do that firm is the firm of Dupre and Dupre. So that firm also, which we saw the first night of the interviews in June, it was like a father-son, just to jog people's memories, I know it was like several months ago now. They also do that work and they do that work for other districts. And I actually believe some of Kristin's comments contacting verifies that as well. So, but the other three firms are not eligible or interested to be considered for that. I think the other thing that Irv was going to say, but maybe I'll say in his absence, Kristin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, and Rob, I think, are we on, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. My recollection, again, from the August meeting, is that the legal services subcommittee had a unanimous recommendation that we entertain two motions. And one motion would be to select a firm for general counsel, which would include all legal matters, including contract negotiations and et cetera. And then a second motion, which could be done in either order, but the second motion was to choose a firm to represent us in terms of special education cases. So the unanimous recommendation from the legal services subcommittee was to have that be two distinct motions, but very clearly stating that it would be fine to select the same firm for both, but in two different motions.
It was almost right. It was just that there'd be at least two motions, so we could have people...
Thank you, Kristin. So for example, if somebody, so Northampton, for example, has somebody do special ed and somebody do general counsel and a different firm do labor negotiations or contract negotiations. So if the legal services subcommittee felt that two motions would be appropriate, if anybody felt compelled to divide out some aspect of, I think, general counsel into a third motion, obviously that motion could be made. I said your thing because you were not here.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, I think that ends the...
I approve.
Okay, so I think that ends the legal services update. Yes, is that, yep, okay.
So then we'll just open it up for discussion on the pros and cons of what we've heard from each firm. And at the end of that, the way that I was planning on voting is by that ballot or roll call method where we just simply go down the line and say who we want for the firm. And if there's a majority, that's it. If there isn't a majority, you ask if anybody wants to change their vote and then we see if we have a majority at that point or not. Catherine.
I just think in terms of clarity, and I want to just discuss this prior to having it be messy, given that there are nine of us, I think it'd be unfortunate if there was like a three, two, 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 one kind of a situation. So, I mean, just because that would seem like the lawyer was not, you know, well thought of by a majority. So I'm wondering if it would be possible to go down the line, I agree with that idea, and then if a firm doesn't emerge with five votes to do like a runoff of the top two, it seems odd if three people could support one firm, given there are a number of firms. So, I know, but it could be, so what hap... So yes, so that's my question. So does a majority mean five?
Yeah.
Or does, okay, great, thanks. Forget it.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay, so open up to discussion for who wants to say who they like. Kip.
I didn't think it would be possible to have a more difficult decision to make than one in the superintendent. This one's pretty close. I would like to support the retaining of our current law firm. And I have several reasons that I'd like to put out there to support that. Number one, I think that when you look at the range of, an array of potential legal issues that come before the district, that the district is involved with.
Kip, are you saying for everything or for one thing?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm saying for everything.
All access. Thank you, all right.
Sorry. If you, reason, argument number one, reason number one. If you look at the array of legal matters that the district has to deal with, it seems to me that all of the law firms that were interviewed are certainly quite capable of handling all of that. Consequently, I see no reason to change. Number two, negotiations, I believe, is the one of two extraordinarily important functions that the law firm provides. At the risk of putting out there again my own personal experiences, but as a one-time president of the Amherst-Palom Education Association, as a head of negotiations for several contract, collective bargaining sessions, and as a member of the negotiating team for several more bargaining sessions, I had the opportunity to sit across from the table from Ginny Tate. And to put it mildly, we didn't like her. And the reason why we didn't like her was that she was extraordinarily qualified. She knows collective bargaining law. She understands the dynamics and nuances of collective bargaining. And she is a very capable, intelligent advocate for the people, the institution that she represents. She was a very, very tough adversary. And sitting across from her was a challenging experience. Number three, I believe that we've reached a point as a district where those people who retain any kind of institutional memory, any sense of history of the district is rapidly disappearing. Ironically, Ms. Tate and her law firm may be one of the last groups standing that has any comprehension of the historical timeline of what the district has gone through in all matters pertaining to legal, including negotiations. And finally, number four, and I must confess the most difficult and the most, the one that I've spent the most time agonizing about is the special education business. This is something that I have spent a lot of time thinking about. For, not only as a member of this committee, but also as someone who had firsthand experience as the first director of the East Street Alternative High School back some eight years ago in working with youngsters who were under the umbrella of the special ed program, whose needs were truly extraordinary. And also having experience in working with the parents of those youngsters. I can't honestly say that I walked in their shoes. I never have and I never did. Nevertheless, I think I have some sense of the emotional experience that they go through in attempting to find and fight for the best services that they can for their children. Unfortunately, the sped process from a legislative point of view is structured in such a way so that it's inherently conflicting. And even within the school district, there is a conflict between defending or advocating for children under the umbrella of sped and at the same time, paying close attention to the fiscal responsibilities that this district has. Those two things often come in conflict. There has been a lot of talk about the tenaciousness, the aggressiveness, the eagerness to litigate on the part of Ms. Tate and her law firm. I am of the opinion, and I'm willing to hear if there's more information out there, that it is not the law firm that negotiates, that makes that decision. It is the school district or the parent that makes that decision. I'm also under the impression, and again, correct me if my information is wrong, that the number of requests for hearings is greater on the part of parents than it is on the part of the district. I believe that's correct information. All of this is in that context of emotional angst, if you will, that parents feel. And I, again, can't say that I've been there. But nevertheless, when I put all of these factors together, I believe that the best thing for the district and ultimately the best thing for the community and for the administration, staff, and children is to retain the current law firm.
You know, I really would like to see a change. And two areas. One is special education. There is... There is a lot of pain out in the community. There have been too many parents who have weighed in. To ignore that is not a good thing, in my estimation. It is not a good thing. I think that all the firms that we have vetted have incredible experience and expertise and can handle this in a good way and serve our community and our children. All right? So, I am looking at changing that firm from our current legal representation to someone else. And when we vote, I will say those names. Similarly, in relationship to labor, I believe there's no doubt that if you looked at all the law firms, all of them are highly qualified in relationship to labor negotiations. And, you know, Kip, if I took your argument, it would be, the strength of your argument is, well, the institutional memory is there, and she's been here the longest. But I believe that there are a lot of labor negotiators who would say that familiarity breeds sometimes complacency. And I believe that there is merit in going into negotiations with someone that is not known. All right? And I believe there's great merit to that. And also, I look back at recommendations that have been made by the current law firm in relationships to labor negotiations that really haven't served this district very well, that I have to take great exception to. And so, therefore, and those are the reasons that I would be looking for a change.
Maria, then Debbie.
I would like to reiterate the statements that I made earlier to the committee, that I think making this decision is, it's a significant decision for the district. And I am concerned that while Ms. Anderson called other school districts to talk to their superintendents about the track record or their opinions of the current firms, I haven't had that same opportunity from the school district's perspective. So, while I have stated this earlier, to make a change from a current attorney to a new attorney is a decision that there should be concerns that would make you make that level of a movement. I, from the district's perspective, have shared earlier that we have not had those concerns. So, for that movement to be made is an issue. And I don't think that the staff have had the same level of voice in this discussion. And quite honestly, there are pockets of people who may have opinions, and that is one pocket of all of the legal work that happens in the district. So, I would want to state that I don't think that this committee has really take, I shouldn't say taken seriously, but have really heard the opinions of the staff. And I understand that, you know, Erv stated that the school, that the attorney makes recommendations or the things that she's put in the contract, quite honestly, it's the school committee's responsibility to go in with negotiations. The attorney doesn't make those decisions. It's the school committee and the superintendent. So, I want to be clear of whose responsibility is what. In addition, I would like to state that I know that people have said the cost would not be significant, because, oh, these firms would come in and review our documents. I think we're missing a piece of, when you have worked with a firm for a period of time, and it's not just Ms. Tate, it's the firm, we have a standard expectation around forms that we use. And I don't mean templates, because templates are things like you would use for a will. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about highly legal, specific circumstances that you need to have some solid standing when you're going to send out a letter, whether it's to another school district or to a family. And we've already established those, that background information. So, our contact time with an attorney is much less. In addition, if I were to send, or anyone were to send, an email to our current attorneys, they already have an understanding of how we approach, or discuss, or investigate issues so that I can say, here's my one line question, and they don't need the context from me. The context, I think, is what is the cost associated with this, what it would take for me to give the historical perspective related to a specific question or circumstance will take, will take substantial time. And I can't, I didn't attach a dollar to it. I don't think that that's something I really honestly can do. But that is my opinion.
Just, I don't need to... But I just wanted, I think she, Maria commented on what I said, and I need you to say. Look, when you say we didn't have staff input, we gave adequate time. We sought out...
I didn't... Yes. So, like Kip, the decision about the attorney for the special ed is something I've agonized over. And, you know, to Erv's point about there being a lot of pain in the community, I think that is obvious. I don't believe, however, that we can place the blame for that at the feet of the attorney. I think the blame lies within us. And I think that's something that it's really up to our district to remedy and to work on. I'm not convinced that simply putting another attorney in that role will make that much of a difference. And given that, when you look at the state of Massachusetts, and it seems to me that overwhelming majority of school districts use Ginny Tate's firm for special ed, which says something to me. It says to me there's got to be a pretty good reason that we would not want to use them. And I just haven't really, I'm not trying to minimize the pain, but again, I'm not, I'm not convinced that that is, that is the attorney. I think it's a lot of the process, and I think there's a lot of work that we could do on that. So, for those reasons, I really do think sticking with Ginny Tate's firm is the appropriate approach for special ed.
So, I have a few things to say, and I will try to be as brief as I can be. And I want to say that on, that I've been a member of this Legal Services Subcommittee since it started, which was in September, that the motion for starting Legal Services Subcommittee actually came from the former chair, Mr. Hager. And that was what led to this process being started. I agreed with the process, and I agreed with doing the process, because like searching for a superintendent, I believe it's appropriate to conduct a legal, a review of legal services periodically, and we could not determine the last time we had done so. So, I was glad that we did that process. And I have been, attended all of the Legal Services Subcommittee meetings, and we made a decision to submit announcements, and we got a lot of different bids back. We asked our current firm. Murphy Hesse, Tumey and Lehane, if they wanted to participate in that search. And on December 4th, they sent a letter to Mr. Hager, which is a public document that says, "On behalf of Murphy Hesse, Tumey and Lehane, I wish to inform the school committees that the firm will not be applying to continuous counsel." This is a public document, so other people could read it, but it includes a number of statements that I frankly found offensive, which includes accusations that Mr. Hager has been threatening, that he wants legal services that support his view and not are based in the law. And so, I guess I found that letter very concerning. I believe then some discussions happened with the firm, and they reconsidered, and there's a follow-up letter in December, later in December, that says they've reconsidered and they would like to be included. So, but I felt that letter was disrespectful to, frankly, the chair of the school committee at the time, Mr. Hager, and on behalf of that, to the whole school committee. That therefore led me, on December 17th, to fail to support a motion to bring Murphy Hesse, Tumey and Lehane back for consideration for the whole committee. So, as part of Legal Services Subcommittee, this is also a legal document. There was a motion, which was made by Ms. Lucian and seconded by Mr. Gould, Ms. Gould, sorry. And it says, "If the Legal Services Subcommittee receives confirmation by Monday, December 21st, 2009, from this firm, they wish to be considered, the legal matter Subcommittee will recommend them to be brought forward." And so, that motion was made by Ms. Lucian, seconded by Ms. Gould, and it failed by a vote of two-two, with two abstentions. And that because, that's because Ms. Lucian and Ms. Gould voted to approve. I voted against that motion to bring them forward because of my concerns and because of the letter they had sent. Erv Rhodes, also a member of that committee, chair of that committee, also voted not to pass it. So, it failed two-two. The reason it failed was because it had to have a majority in order to go forward. At the time, both Ms. Garrick, then as interim special, or special ed director, assistant superintendent for special education, and Ms. Mazur, Kathy Mazur, director of HR, were also members, voting members of this committee. And so, there was sort of some dissatisfaction that the two Amherst members had voted against bringing this firm back for consideration. The members from Chutes, Bering, Palom had voted too. And then, but there was abstentions from both Ms. Garrick and Ms. Mazur. Wanting, that was December 17th, it was my birthday, if I remember it well. Anyway, and so, so there was some discussion about the staff members, Ms. Garrick and Ms. Mazur abstained. And there was some discussion that that was inappropriate, they had abstained. So, Ms. Anderson made a motion to reconsider the previous motion. So, it was done. It was done. And I made a motion to reconsider the previous motion, which was seconded by Ms. Lucian. And the motion to reconsider passed by unanimous vote. So, everybody felt we could reconsider. And that was because there was concern that both Ms. Garrick and Ms. Mazur felt they could not vote. And so, there was a revote, and that revote included votes in the affirmative from both Ms. Garrick and Ms. Mazur. Chairman Rhodes and Ms. Anderson again voted no, and voted to not bring the firm back. So, I know that there has been concern about Ms. Anderson's actions and words, but I voted as of December 17th not to include this firm, because I was concerned about the letter that they had sent. Now, so that's just setting the historical record. I am going to vote against using Murphy, Hesse, Tumey and Lehane for anything. And I want to state my reasons, and there are three. So, my first is that we've heard a lot tonight, actually, about calls from the community and the importance of listening to community voices. And I've heard from six different families, and ironically, families, including families in Chutes, Bering, Palom, as well as families in Amherst, that have said that they've had significant concerns about the legal representation and about Ginny Tate. I have no way of, of course, judging the accuracy or the veracity of those accusations, as Ms. Gould stated. But then Ms. Gould also stated, well, you know, there must be, there's nothing wrong with the attorney, there's something wrong with our, you know, with our system or our procedure. And I guess that's concerning, because, you know, I haven't seen any steps, you know, for us to take to figure that out or determine whether things are there. Nonetheless, I feel that if we have six parents who have had unpleasant experiences, and I, my understanding is it's more parents who have frankly felt not comfortable coming forward, I actually take that seriously. And those are six parents that I've spoken to face to face. All right? So, that's number one. Number two, former chair, Hager, had significant concerns about the accessibility of the Murphy, Hesse, Tumey and Lehane firm. That's echoed in repeated minutes of the Legal Services Subcommittee and the Regional Committee. And that was one of the concerns that initially led him to say we should look for a different legal service potentially. That was also echoed in the comments I received when I talked to superintendents in school committee chairs in other districts, that they said, "The legal service is excellent, she's good, but she does take a while to get back to you, sometimes a couple of phone calls. Timeliness is not, you know, her thing. She's very, very busy." So, that also concerned me. However, not even withstanding the special ed concerns and the accessibility, my major concern is that I don't feel that the legal representation that we have gotten is necessarily in the best interest of kids in Amherst. But I want to point to three things. One, the last contract negotiation, or a contract negotiation, gave up the right to control the high school schedule by the school committee and the superintendent. And my understanding from Glenn Kuchar, the head of Massachusetts School Committee, is that that is a completely ridiculous thing for us to have given up, and that other school committees do have that right. And we frankly heard from Mark Jackson at the last meeting about how he wishes we had that right, and that's really important to him, et cetera. So, I guess, and I understand that the school committee is the, you know, negotiating with the superintendent, and so maybe the school committee said, you know, "No, no, we're fine to give it away. It doesn't matter." I guess I want a lawyer, since none of us are lawyers, I want a lawyer who's going to say, "That is a bad, 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 bad idea." So, I'm concerned that we don't have that. I have two kids in elementary schools, and I was pretty shocked, I think I learned as a member of the school committee, that our most recent contract gave up parent-teacher conferences in the spring. And so, parents can request a conference, teachers may or may not have a conference. And I guess I feel that that parent-child communication is really important, and I want teachers to want to meet with parents, and I would expect that that's something important and that we should have. And I'm disappointed that right now the contract states that parents have a conference with the teacher in October, and never again, October, and that's it. And I don't think that's good. And then, three, we received a memo on January 12th, and I know that some members of the committee joined since then, it was a memo from Farshid, I'm sorry, to Farshid, Hager, from Ginny Tate. And it says, "Back in the fall," and it refers to the contract with then Superintendent Alberto Rodriguez. And what this memo says, which again, I can distribute if people don't have it, is that based on a decision from the Wayland School Committee, that the first line of the contract with Alberto is invalid under Massachusetts law. And as a result of that, we need to change this, and this first clause is no longer active. That clause had been inserted by our lawyer, although it had, was still pending in terms of litigation, and nobody had ever said that was a legal clause. And that may seem like a small, tiny point, but I want to be clear that what that clause was, was stating that the school committee should go into executive session at least annually with the superintendent to review his evaluation, to provide performance review data. That is actually illegal. We are not allowed to go into executive section to do that. And in fact, that's a very important thing. Had we done that, it would have been problematic. So, I will not be voting to support the current firm for any of those, and it's for those three reasons.
So, I want to speak first about the desirability of either splitting the board for a Heatherland Farm, and then on to other things. I think it is crucial for our general counsel to be loyal first to the school committee. Glenn Kuchar, who is the head of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, gave me and I believe our whole committee advice when he said, "It's the school committee that chooses the lawyer, not the administration." And because the lawyer is first and foremost loyal to us, it is one of our fundamental jobs. There have been and may in the future be difficult legal issues involving senior administrators or others with the entrance of a single or multiple administrator, and the school committee may diverge. The attorney providing special education services works very closely with the administration and regularly with the administration, and they tend to form close relationships, I think, if the process is successful. I think this can potentially muddle an attorney's allegiance on other issues. Therefore, I strongly support, I don't mean successful, their relationship is successful. Therefore, I strongly support the selection of two different attorneys, one for general counsel and one for special education. In terms of my views of the specific firms, I want to speak first about our current firm's legal services. It is difficult to evaluate the performance of legal counsel, because legal counsel works as a team with the administration and is employed by the school committee and the district. Nonetheless, the record is relevant, it's what we have, and I'm seriously troubled by the record along a number of dimensions. And I reject the view that Jerry Hockman, Elaine Brighty, and many, many other members of the school committee deserve all the credit for good things, or all the blame for agreeing to things that I find really troubling. And not, I think it's Liz Velar, whatever her last name is, really said, "Anything you do, you always have to look through the lenses, whether it's in the best interest of the children." I really reject the view that lawyers are just conduits of information, particularly during negotiations. Lawyers really, they take advice from their clients, but their advocacy, success and efforts really determine where the negotiations are centered upon. So, I think it's to sort of view them as just conduits of information, I just think is wrong. So, I want to echo Catherine Sanderson about my, some of the troubles that I really am very concerned about. I'm really concerned about collective bargaining agreements that gave teachers at the high school unprecedented control, teachers in various schools unprecedented control over important working conditions, including the high school master schedule, I think, aspects of class size at various levels, and the elimination of the automatic spring parent-teacher conference in our elementary schools. None of these are in the best interest of our children. I'm very concerned about the clause in the most recent contract that was in violation of Massachusetts law and was sort of a fundamental aspect of our, one of our jobs, our key jobs, which is to evaluate the superintendent. The letter to Farshid, Hager and School Committee, and the school committee. Attorneys have to understand that school committee members are not professionals in our jobs. We are volunteers without a lot of experience. So, Farshid may not have been acting, as he himself has said, perhaps his behavior was not, you know, in the best productive manner. But Ms. Tate should have recognized that we are amateurs, and I believe she should have been much more loyal to a district she has served for so many years. Finally, I'm most troubled by what I find to be a much greater willingness to seek common ground and make concessions, and I believe often unwise, as I've said, with staff than with some of our most vulnerable families. Such families must feel welcome and supported even at times when disagreements are difficult to resolve. The statement that I heard Ms. Tate make at the legal, at her presentation, and that I've heard from many of our senior staff, that it's always all about the children, and particularly with regard to special education, provides, I believe, a misleading picture of the disputes that often fundamentally involve resource allocation and decisions about whether additional services are needed to satisfy the law. I think that we must respect the advocacy efforts of families. I think that we must respect the advocacy efforts of families. I support the selection of Deitch and Williams as general counsel based on Liz Velario's accomplishments, the frankness and wisdom of her responses, and the firm's sterling record. I support Dupere for special education counsel. And I think that one of the things that's important is that it's very difficult to judge, you know, the attorney. And I think Jenny Tate and the firm she works for does have a sterling reputation in special education in the state of Massachusetts. But I have to judge on the record of what has happened with our schools. And I think that another thing that is relevant to me in terms of the general counsel issue is that a number of districts, I believe including Long Meadow, have gone to a situation in which Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, no longer provides general counsel services. So there is a tendency for firms to now be splitting their work using that firm to do special education, other firms to do general counsel. So I think it's abundantly clear where their expertise is, and decisions that other districts are making.
So, you know, I want to be clear. It's not a person who the school is saying we have to have. It is the services of the firm. And I want it, the same argument that I'm hearing around contract negotiation is the same, is the flip side of what you're saying in terms of special education. I'm hearing, well, that the attorney needs to kind of make us do things in contract negotiation even if the superintendent and the school committee say no. The lawyer's job is to give us their legal opinion, and then we are, we're hired and in this role to make the decisions, not the attorney. They don't. The schedule at the high school, the giving up of teacher contract time had, it's unfair to put it at the feet of an attorney who gives you consultation. It's not their decision. And the same, in terms of special education, what you say is you want an attorney who's working in the best interest and caring about families, at which I totally agree you want to care about families, but there are times where the district's interests are not the same as the interest of the family. And the same thing you want that attorney to do for negotiations is what you're saying they shouldn't do in cases of special education. I also, I also believe to base, and this is no disrespect to families of student, of children who are receiving special education services. However, you do not know all of the circumstances regarding those cases, and for you to say that we are disregarding, or that the attorney is disregarding the needs of students is really very disrespectful. It's extremely disrespectful. And that is the statement that was made.
So, I want to make a few comments. One, I'm saddened to hear that the administration did not have adequate opportunity to feedback. That was something that was voted on by the Legal Services Committee, that the chair and the superintendent would come together to design a venue through which staff could feedback. And I'm saddened that we are now making a decision without adequate feedback from the people who will work closely with this team, whomever it is. So with that said. I was also the person that was charged with doing a lot of searching for the special education, talking to special education directors in the different districts. And I wish I had known that only two actually wanted to go for it. I don't think, that's not your fault at all, but it would have been nice. So I didn't spend a lot of time on that. It was clear, though, from the references, that Dupere and Dupere, and Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lahane were the only two firms that really we should consider. They're the only ones that had any real experience working with the Bureau of Special Education Appeals. And we were presented, or I felt I was presented with what you've said in the past, what Debbie said in the past, these kind of very powerful claims from CPAC, for the most part, and parents who are involved with CPAC. And potentially, we've all heard other comments. And then several responses from special ed directors from across many, many districts, and I think this is public, a public document, so you can look at all the responses, that over and over said Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lahane are the best. They're the best in the field, and speaking against the aggressiveness of the firm. Now, I want to say that, so that troubled me. I'm hearing these things, and I don't know how to make sense of it. And so I went and talked to the coordinator of Special Ed Appeals, and I also talked to the coordinator of Mediation. Because what I kept hearing from families was that our district was not entering into mediation when we, when they wanted that. And I take that seriously, I do. I will say that based on discussions I had with the director from Mediation, a director of Mediation, I concur with what Debbie's saying, because I would say, I would like us to move forward on, I'm not making a motion here, possibly having some kind of policy to go to mediation prior to ever going to litigation if possible, or something like that, when we're reviewing our special education program. Because it was clear to me from talking with the director of Special Ed, that, or director of Mediation, that there might possibly be a tendency to want to solve things in-house without bringing in a mediator. And what I think could happen, potentially, is that if there's no mediator, and it's just a family against administration, the family drops. And so, again, this is, I think, an in-house issue that we need to deal with in special education. I do not see this as something that is about our law firm. So with that, I want to say, I did receive a letter from CPAC, and I want to say, I understand this is a social justice issue. I have a difference of opinion about how to address the social justice issue. I do not think it is about the lawyer. I do think it is about reforming our special education, getting mediation to be the first practice. I felt like that needed to be said, so I could say, I do continue to support Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lahane. They have depth in their firm. They have several lawyers. So when we are addressing special ed, they have a number of people and a number of resources, that again was across the references. I will also add that when firms, when school districts chose to elect another firm for general counsel, they often stayed with Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lahane. That was the choice of special ed directors and superintendents and school committees. I don't see a reason, other than the concern of parents around mediation, to move away from Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lahane. And I agree that I do not see that this is an issue. The mediation issue is not an issue of the firm. It's an issue of our practice in this district.
I just want to quickly, I obviously wasn't clear in my comments, particularly about special education, so let me clarify. I do, I tried to make clear that our special education counsel represents the interests of the district. And the interests of the district invariably have to worry about costs. And I think that families who are advocating for their kids are going to seek the best services possible. And sometimes, the district is going to have, is going to invariably make the decision that, "We're sorry, we believe that a lesser set of services satisfies the law." And I support that because ultimately, we work on a fixed budget. What, where I have trouble was the contrast I heard during the presentations. Because Liz Velario from Deitch and Williams, who's not up for special education, talked about special education, and she said, "This is clearly an explicit place where the interests of the district and the interests of the families diverge." And yet, when Jenny Tate talked about this, she said, "It's all about the children." And I think that if we have that attitude, I think when we tell families, "No, because we have to worry about district resources," families may be very unhappy, but I think they're respected because we're not telling them we know, you know, that we are the ones who really know about their children. I know it's painful for families, but it is the way it is. With regard to contracts, I'm really troubled by the idea, by two ideas. One, that we can lay so much blame on Jerry Hochman and all the members of the school committee. And second, by the notion that lawyers are just conduits. In adversarial situations, in contract negotiations, are adversarial situations, the skill and tenacity of a lawyer determines where the middle ground is ultimately. Liz Velario talked clearly about the fact that sometimes you just have to go to fact-finding, and then to, I think it's mediation is what's called for in Massachusetts. Because it is the process that moves you to a settlement that is in the best interest of the district. I think we have been very, very committed to finding common ground with our staff, always, without ever going to mediation or fact-finding. And I think that has led us to make concessions that are not in the best interest of children. And I think that an attorney should be forceful in his or her advocacy for the district to make choices that are in the best interest of children, and where, and push respectfully the ground in terms of where the ultimate settlement is made.
I would like to say that I agree with Steve, that we're not expert, by any stretch of the imagination, on so many issues that we have to make decisions about. And that very factor prompted me to figure out, how can I go about acquiring more information that will help me make a decision here, particularly about this very emotional sped issue? And as a result, I went to the Amherst-Palom Regional School District Special Education Program Evaluation of June 2010. And this is a fairly lengthy document with a lot of information in here, including 10 recommendations that are made to the school committee and the administrations, none of which address directly or explicitly the law firm. Nevertheless, on page 10 of this report, and I'm reading here from the topic Conflict Resolution, and I'm quoting, "The number and type of disputes that are documented by the district from 2006 through 2009 are not excessive for the size of the Amherst-Palom district. However, it must be recognized that parents involved in these disputes generally do not experience the process as a positive experience, which leads to parent perceptions that the district is oriented towards litigation and does not fully utilize the options of facilitation and mediation." That was one point that struck me as being more of a systemic issue than necessarily laying at the doorstep of the law firm. There is on page, excuse me, on page 11, the PCG group, the Public Consulting Group that did this analysis, also I'm quoting, "A wide range of concerns and areas for improvement were also cited by parents that provide strong indicators of where a considerable number of parents have not had positive experience," and so on and so forth. So they acknowledge that that's an issue. But in the summary of the report, "The district is to be commended for exemplary attendance patterns for both special education and general education students, but needs to monitor the increase in absence for special education students," and so on and so forth. There is in this report evidence that the majority of special ed parents are accepting of the programs that are provided for their children. I believe the figure is something in the area of in excess of 50%, close to 60%. The number that's cited in this article that are, in this study, that are not in favor of the range of programs that are provided to special ed youngsters is in the neighborhood of about 40%. So what really are we talking about here? Are we talking, we're spending an hour, probably more than that, because it's been over several meetings? It seems to me that rather than devoting so much time and energy to an issue that's really kind of secondary to the whole topic, what we really should be focusing on is what can we as a committee do to provide the resources, the personnel, and the training so that the special ed staff can provide the services, can write the proper IEPs for kids that parents will not have a problem with? That's what we should be addressing. And I don't think that this, to me, the law business is kind of a smokescreen. We're losing sight of what is really fundamental here, and what is really the problem. And I would also add one other thing about making available resources. It's very, very clear that the staff should be exposed to training that will assist them in being able to develop more positive communication networks with the parents, whether the parents are in favor or opposed to what they are being presented by the sped staff. That's what we should be talking about, not the law firm.
The Legal Services Subcommittee provided adequate time for all constituencies to provide input into our process. Every meeting was posted, as required by law. Posted, up on the web, available to everyone. Talked to, about, with staff, because staff were there. They knew when we are, when our meetings were. You were there, Joanna Smith. You provided input. We provided, we provided a forum for people to provide input on. We then took those in. And by the way, the one who, person who presented the most extensive input was you, Joanna, in terms of the input into this process, the written input. So I take exception with you, Maria, to say that the staff were not involved. They were involved, and they were invited to participate. You know, I don't know how we could have do it. You were there, Maria, Joanna was there.
Not during those meetings when you decided how you were going to gather input from superintendents and special ed directors.
Wait a minute, Maria, we gave, we had, we put out a forum for people to, for staff, for community members to input to us on. Not only that, for you to say that we don't, we didn't provide the proper venue. I don't know what the proper venue is, in terms of our meetings being public, to open to everyone. You know, I mean, I just don't know what that means. And so I take exception to that.
I'd like the Subcommittee person who took notes on this to answer it.
I do have to say, we voted, we voted as a Subcommittee for the chair, you, and Maria to come together to decide a process, to get adequate feedback. I am also sorry, I sent two emails with the minutes asking you if that had been done. I apologize that I have to bring this up, but there was not a time that, so yes, we had feedback on the questions and the process from the staff. That is absolutely true, and the meetings were open, that is absolutely true. But as a Subcommittee, we voted that we needed to get feedback about the law firm, the current law firm, from staff, and that did not happen. Whether that's good, bad, whatever, I'm leaving it there, but that is.
I thought that occurred in terms of what we had before us, in terms of the feedback that we got. I don't understand why we'd have to have a separate thing. All right, but as a matter, as far as I'm concerned, it was open. The process was open, the meetings were open, they were posted. Everyone could come who wanted to come, and people did come and make their comments. And if people want to take exception to that, those people, especially staff at the time, could have come through either Joanna or through Maria to say, "Hey, look, here's what we feel." But it never occurred.
So I'm next, and then Debbie. No, no, I want to keep the discussion up here. So this is a really, really hard decision, and I've listened very hard to both sides of this. I've talked to Maria, to Joanne, to Kathy Mazur. I've talked to many parents. I've talked to some past school committee members, and I've tried to listen really, really hard. But I'm gonna, the way, when I vote, I'm going to make somebody unhappy, and that's just the way it goes. So I apologize for those I'm going to make unhappy with my vote. I want to talk a little bit about my own personal experience with attorneys. In my past life in the business world, I worked with a lot of attorneys. And we had very smart, hardball attorneys. We had less smart, less expensive attorneys. And I dealt with attorneys on the other side as well. And the last big transaction that I In the last big, big transaction that I was involved with, we had our very smart, very hardball attorney who maneuvered us so that if the deal blew up, we'd be in a good position if it went to litigation. But, but on the other side was an attorney that was a let's-make-this-deal-happen kind of attorney, and the deal wouldn't have happened without that attorney. So I'm in general in favor of a let's-make-it-happen kind of attorney and not a hardball type of attorney. Now Jenny Tate is respected as one of the smartest attorneys around, but she's also very aggressive. So I favor the less aggressive type of attorney in general, but particularly in the special education area where let's, let's get together and make this work is most important. So I'm favoring Dupree for special education attorney. I'm a lot, I'm not favoring a change in the general counsel because it's there where I feel that we need the history, we need someone who knows the history. It's there where there's more, it's more important that the administration and the attorney have things worked out on an efficient basis to do things efficiently. You know, they know like this what to do when something comes up. So that's, that's the way I feel about it. Kristen?
Can I just add, I think that what I hear from lots of people is concern about Jenny Tate. And I would say, one of the things I learned from talking with different folks is, you don't have to have Jenny Tate as your lawyer if you have a firm. So you can keep a relationship with a firm and choose someone else in the special ed field. They have several lawyers, and, because that's basically their specialty. And so if the concern is Jenny Tate and the aggressiveness of Jenny Tate, Jenny Tate shouldn't be our lawyer then. But I would say the firm could stay. They have a depth of expertise in there.
You had your hand up there, didn't you?
I did. I was confused about Irv saying that we got feedback from the staff because I didn't think we got any feedback from the staff. But then I realized, I think you were talking about feedback on the questions. Is that a correct statement?
Correct.
Okay. So that was part of it. But I also just wanted to, I know Steve spoke in support of Deutsch Williams, and I guess I would like to say I do not support that firm. One of the biggest reasons being when we started this process, our criteria for selecting the firms that we would even consider was that they were not in Boston. I mean, that was one of our big things. We don't want an attorney who has to travel from Boston. You know, it just adds to the costs. So that was point number one. And I have to say, and I know this is probably seemingly minor to many people, but when one of his first comments was, "I noticed that your cost per student is less than the state average, so you're clearly doing something right," it said to me he wasn't really very prepared for the interview. And that, to me, seems like a really little thing, but in someone in that kind of professional position, I have a problem with that.
Steve?
I just, I have a question, I guess. Because I, I don't know if, I think there's been a discussion, I guess I would ask the committee, there's been a discussion with DuPere about willingness to do special education only. That would be unusual for them. In fact, I think we'd be the only firm. I wonder if they would do special education only for a school district that had Murph, I'm gonna mispronounce that, that firm, our current firm as general counsel? Because our current firm is regarded sort of as the special education experts. And so I just wonder if that's, you know, if that's in some sense a viable partnership, if, if they would even agree to do that, or if Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane would actually agree to do that. So, and I don't, I guess I'm wondering, have you checked that? Because my guess would also be that we might be the only district in the state that would be employing Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane as general counsel, not as special education, sort of in direct opposite to what their expertise is. So I guess I'm wondering, because we could end up back here next month, you know, with having had firms refuse to serve us, and we could end up in an Amherst meeting, which I think is a good possibility, with Amherst saying, some of us saying, "This seems, you know, this seems like a very suboptimal arrangement." So I guess, I'm wondering from you if there's been some discussion with them that this is a viable option, or?
That would be the legal services.
Well, no, I haven't had a discussion with them, but the options given us are the firms that were given us, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that.
Go ahead, Karen.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Irving, as well. Yeah. So I just, I had a couple of things I wanted to say. One, Debbie, I actually took note of the same thing that you did when that gentleman's name actually slips my mind at the moment, said the thing about per pupil costs, and that's been one of my key, bug eye on the committee. And my understanding is that our lawyer would actually be Liz Valario, and that she would be the one representing us. And so when I spoke with firms, I mean, I'm sorry, when I spoke with districts, all of them spoke only about her and specifically about her. In addition, when I emailed all of the firms the follow-up questions about would you represent us in special ed, you know, et cetera, et cetera, I emailed it around six or seven PM one evening, and I got back, I got an immediate bounce back from her that said, "I'm in trial, you know, I'm not gonna give, I won't be in the office, you know, the next day or whatever." And by 11:30 that night, she'd actually emailed me, you know, already. So I was really impressed with that, and that echoes the comments that I heard from other firms. So I actually shared the concern that you had about that other partner at that firm, but my understanding is that Liz Valario would be the person representing us. I was frankly really taken by her comment that it's education first, and how does this matter? How does this impact education for kids? And so I would also support that, that firm for general counsel. I do not know if Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane would represent us for general counsel. Presumably she would, but that question was not specifically asked to her, since obviously she would represent us for special ed. I did not discuss, I did not hear from any other firm in Western Mass, any other district in Western Mass that uses that firm for general counsel and not for special ed. So it would, as Steve indicated, be highly unusual. And Debbie, going back to one more of your points, I do agree that having a Western Mass firm was one of the original goals, and I, and that was actually one that I felt very strongly about in terms of looking at that. And, and the reason why I would put the nod to Deutsch and Williams frankly, is that they were a very reasonable cost. So in terms of they were actually lower than the cost of Sullivan, Hayes, and Quinn, which was the firm in West Springfield, I mean, I'm sorry, in Springfield, and I believe they were also lower than the cost quoted by Koppelmann and Page. So they were not, Koppelmann and Page was higher. So I guess for me, I was concerned about the cost that we were paying and that.
I have Deutsch and Williams at 200.
That's what I have.
And Koppelmann and Page at 170.
I thought that had gone up in the more recent thing. But then, our current firm is at 220. And so I guess I was thinking that my concern initially, so although local firms was one of the criteria, it was not the only criteria, and so to me, it was a more cost-effective, and that also influenced it such that I felt the Boston firm was worth it. I didn't think that was our only criteria, but it was one of them.
Just a point of clarification, I wasn't actually sure what our current firm is. I had it at 200. Does, do we, do we know?
It's 220.
Which is the same as Sullivan, Hayes, and Quinn. I thought, we know that for a fact.
It's in their material.
It is.
Yeah, it's 220. Yeah.
I don't know why I had 200. I had 210 for Deutsch and Williams.
Around.
Any more comment?
I guess I just, I want to share the same concern that Steve had about the potential oddness of ending up with Murphy Hess as our general counsel and then a different firm as our special education counsel, but it's looking like that's certainly a possibility. Personally, I don't feel I can support the current firm for either, given a lot of reasons that have been echoed already, I don't need to go back into, but I have my concern about it ending up that way, and I don't have a solution for it right now, but I just wanted to state that because it seems like it's going to be an odd arrangement if that's how it comes to pass.
Any more discussion? Okay, if not, we'll, we'll start the voting on the special education attorney.
I do have just one other concern. I know that people have mentioned DuPere and DuPere, and I, I may be in the minority here, but I have, I actually am not one who is in favor of having a retainer with an attorney. I'm not convinced that it saves money, and I worry about, for example, at a tiny place like Pelham, being forced to pay for attorney costs that we don't use, because on a retainer you pay for whether you use it or not, and I imagine it'll be split by whatever formula we come up with. So I just wanted to bring that up there, that I am, that is something that would be really concerning to me. I know that DuPere and DuPere have said they would allow another type of contractual arrangement, but it sounded to me like most people with them use the retainer, and that is something I find concerning.
Okay, if we're ready to come to the vote, why don't we start at that end and come this way?
What are we voting on?
We're voting for the special education attorney. And you're just, you're gonna just say who you want that firm to be?
I'm sorry, shouldn't we have a motion to a firm first? Isn't that what we're voting, should be voting on? I'm sorry, I just need a clarification of that, that's all.
Go ahead, Steve.
I was gonna make a motion. I move that we vote for special education, to select a counsel for special education.
Second.
Allies in favor? Opposed? Okay, so as I said before the discussion, the way we'll vote is in the roll call or ballot method, which is we each call out who we want the firm to be. If we have a majority at the end of that vote, we're done. If we don't, we ask if anybody wants to change their vote. Everyone understand? So we are voting on the special education attorney, law firm, and Kip, you go first.
Murphy. Murphy.
Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane.
DuPere and DuPere. DuPere and DuPere.
DuPere and DuPere.
DuPere.
Uh, DuPere. So that's five votes for DuPere and four votes for Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane. So can I have a motion to vote on the general counsel?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Allies in favor? So I'll go the other way now. I'll start. Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane.
Deutsch Williams.
Deutsch Williams.
Deutsch Williams.
Deutsch Williams.
Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane. Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane. Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane.
So that's five to four for Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lahane, four for Deutsch Williams. Okay, so we've chosen two law firms. It's 9:30, and we're supposed to take a vote to extend it any further. Can I have a motion to extend it to 10 o'clock?
I move to extend the meeting to 10 o'clock.
Is there a second?
Second.
Allies in favor? Opposed? Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. I want to say that as vice chair, I assist in setting up the agendas, and I believe, I think you and I were the only ones last time. But I just want to say that, that when we planned this agenda, we anticipated that superintendent search firm discussion would take five minutes. That was our assumption, because we figured we wouldn't have a lot of bids, we were contractually obligated to go with the lowest one, so how could that possibly take more than five minutes? So I just want to reiterate that if there's something that people have, because obviously making a decision to appoint a permanent superintendent tonight and not have a search firm is a very big item and would take more than five minutes, I think it'd be really helpful if in the future the chair and vice chair could know that prior to setting the agenda, because obviously we would have, you know, I think, planned differently.
Maria, then Debbie.
Can I recommend, if you're all okay with this, for two reasons. One, because I'm not feeling well, and I prefer not to spend another hour, if you don't mind, you know, going through a lot of business, but they're the new business we have to do tonight. We really need to do the policy work because that has to get in place, and we need to do the MSBA application request. Today's the deadline for that. And then Rob does need to do the final report for the budget, and we do need to accept gifts. So those are priorities that we have to do. So my suggestion is if we're gonna go really late, I would prefer to hold the district improvement plan until later.
Debbie? Word.
Yeah, I mean, I would just like to say that, you know, Kristen has already said that she, she has regretted making that motion, but the fact of the matter is, it's not, this is not sort of a just Kristen thing. Things take longer than we think they will. It's not just Kristen, it's not just any one of us. So again, I come back to, you know, we may need more than one meeting a month, and just beat that dead horse.
Right. So if it's okay, maybe we should jump to new business and come back to the other. Is that okay with everybody? Yeah?
I'm glad to come back to the other. I think that the district improvement plan is really important for us to talk about, and so I really, I mean, I think it'd be inappropriate to wait on that until October, and I'm sorry, given the lateness of the hour, but I, that strikes me as really urgent. So I just want to say I hope that the decision is not made until then, for us to then abandon the discussion.
Can I say, I just, I was chastised several times tonight. I didn't need to have it happen again, and I understand, I made a bad motion, I apologize for that, I'm sorry for the lateness of the hour. I do not need to be chastised for a fifth time. Let's go forward.
Okay. All right. One more, Kip?
Yeah, along those lines, just in terms of recognizing that, from my perspective, and maybe I'm naive on the new kid on the block, those kinds of statements, I think, are problematic in terms of creating an atmosphere where we can collaborate on very important decisions that we have to make, often under a great deal of pressure. So I want to support Kristen in this, in that frankly, what it points out to me is a question of, again, as a new member of the committee, is there a hard copy of school committee protocol regarding, you know, this kind of an issue? For that matter, had we not gone on so long, I was going to bring up a protocol question of my own regarding public statements by school committee members to the press, and who speaks for the, for the school committee. So, you know, I will defer to the hour, but that's a protocol question that I would like to have answered, as well as, is it written down somewhere where spontaneously, out of, emerging out of the debate, out of the discussion, out of the conversation, we can't have a motion that may not have appeared initially on the agenda? That, to me, seems to be absurd in terms of getting our work done.
I also, I also just want, did want to make a note that we did have a motion this summer that the committee did agree to discuss norms and behavior and process that you may want to, because it seems like it's an issue people want to talk about, we may want to revisit that, or you may want to revisit that, it's not mine to revisit. Also, I'd like to say again, I was given an hour to do a presentation around the district improvement plan, and I've, I'm very directly asking the committee to not have to start this at 9:30, to go till 10:30. I would prefer we do new business, and I would prefer that I do not spend an hour on a district improvement plan at this time of night, when I've been very clear that I think it's reasonable to have meetings until 9:30 or 10 o'clock, and after that, people, it's not an effective, productive conversation any longer.
Okay, so let's go on to policies for first reading. My understanding is we were just going to hand these policies out, which they have been, and ask for email suggestions on any changes to be emailed to Elaine Brighty, who would collect them for the next policy subcommittee meeting. Do you recall that, is being correct, Kip?
Yes.
Okay.
What you should have in front of you, I hope, may I?
Yes, Debbie.
Are the absences, excuses, and truancy? I'll pause there to make sure you have that. And the copy that you should have would include both a dirty copy, if you will, with changes made, and a clean copy, or, excuse me, the changes lined out, and then a clean copy with the changes having been made. Everyone had that okay?
If anyone needs them, there are copies.
And then, secondly, you should have a copy of, again, with basically two, two versions, the dirty version and the clean version of the student handbook policy, excuse me, the student and staff handbook policy. And then you should also have a copy of the new anti-bullying policy. Those are the three that we should consider.
So we're not gonna read these, and it would take too long, so again, we're just asking for you to email comments to Elaine, and I'll email you all with Elaine's email address in case you don't have it. Yeah?
So, so we're just supposed to email comments, then? Are we gonna discuss it at the next reading? Is that the way it's gonna work?
Yes, so basically, you're looking at these, you make suggested Yes, so basically, you're looking at these, you make suggested changes in an email back to Elaine. We'll discuss it at the next policy subcommittee meeting, take into account those suggestions for changes, bring it back for a second reading, at which time we'll hopefully be a meeting where we can actually read them.
If I may add one other item, just in terms of, of future agenda items for the policy subcommittee, in addition to, um, looking at whatever you give us as feedback to these three policies, the main item on the next agenda, excuse me, the main agenda item for the next meeting is going to be the wellness policy. And, um, I would urge you to take a very close, careful look and reading of that particular policy as it's currently written. Um, there's a lot of, um, stuff there, forgive my poor vocabulary, but there's a lot to, to consider and dwell upon, um, that we will have to, to look at and consider. Um, I've asked Rob to join us at our next meeting, uh, because he has some information for us regarding, um, food, et cetera. So, um, please take a look at that, if you have any, um, thoughts, anything you wish to share. I guess, in terms of the open meeting law, what's proper for them to do? Do you send their thoughts to Elaine, and not to me?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, Steve?
I just had one comment, and thank you for, for all this hard work. Um, at, at the roundtable discussion with Dr. Ray Taylor, um, one of the parents, um, talked about the, the direct issue of absences and tardiness, and I think, I think it's a sensitive issue, particularly for, for families that, you know, veterans, difficult circumstances. And I think it would be wise for us to solicit some feedback from the community, um, on that particular policy. That's what she had suggested, and, um, and I think that's a good idea.
May I ask if you have anything in specific, uh, in terms of a concern that they have?
I, I don't, you know, I think that they just, that it would be, I, I mean, there are some natural groups, and so I think you could even, perhaps through the superintendent, send the policy to Dr. Ray Taylor, uh, and, and ask for, for guidance. That's just one possibility. And, and it wasn't a specific discussion, it was just that this issue comes up, families might go live in New York City for a month to visit a relative. I mean, there, I, I think it was contrasted with the idea that some of us can take sabbaticals for three months, and that seems that the, that the, that that's an easier process to get through, and, and other related things. So, so I wasn't sure of the details, but I think it is a sensitive issue.
May I? I don't belong there too much, but, um, that is, um, something that we touched upon a little bit at our last meeting, particularly if you move up the ladders in the high school, and it becomes, um, a potential impact on credits. Um, you know, what's an acceptable excuse, and so on and so forth. So it becomes, sort of as you move up the ladder, it becomes an even, still greater, um, more complex issue, because it begins to involve graduation ultimately. So, um, if, if there are, um, in the meantime, if there are people who you know of who, who have these concerns, again, have them perhaps get to Elaine, and we can, we can certainly look at them, and if it, we, we reach the point where we feel we need something more open, more public to have a, you know, session, then we can proceed in that direction.
Kristen?
I understand, I, I feel like we, we tried to talk about that issue directly, and thinking about withdrawing from school if it's gonna be a month, or whatever, and then entering in, 'cause there's an assumption you'd be in a, a different school setting, but I think, I agree, I think maybe sending it, if Dr. Ray Taylor's, uh, uh, been involved, I, I would be, I would love for her to look it over and see what she thinks.
One thing, of course, process that was done in the past with policies, one of the things we tried to do was post them online, to give, um, staff and community members an opportunity to weigh in, so I would be happy to make sure that happens.
Thank you, Debbie.
Rick, just one last thing.
Yeah.
Point of information for the committee, and, um, what our intention is, is to go through, um, the policy index, if you will, and, um, it's already, those policies that have been identified as in need of revision, um, our intent, intention is to go through those pretty much in sequence, as they appear in the index of the policy handbook. Just so you know the direction we're planning on.
Okay. All right, can we go on to MSBA application requests?
I, I can, I can speak to it somewhat, since Ron.
It's somewhat self-explanatory, actually.
Basically, um, as, as Ron Bahanowicz pointed out, there is this spring repair program, um, grant opportunity that we have to apply through the Massachusetts School Building Authority for funding. And what he would like to try to get funding for is replacement of the middle school windows and doors, under forty years old. And, um, my understanding is that we may receive up to eighty percent of the cost of the project. Um, however, today is the deadline for submission, and the, uh, MSBA is very, very, um, particular about the vote. It has to be ready in this exact format, entered into the minutes that way, and then, um, we have to submit a signed statement by you, Rick, the superintendent, and then a signed copy of tonight's minutes.
So... First, Kip's saying today.
The deadline is today.
At twelve midnight.
Well, my understanding, my understanding from Ron, is that he spoke to them, they told him that because our meeting was happening tonight, that if he went ahead and sent the application, they would flag it, knowing that hopefully a vote would be taken, and we have, I believe he said, three days to follow up with the, um, submission of the information.
So, just, 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 if I can do, what I want, uh, what I would like to do is, is to make a motion, and, uh, that we go ahead and apply for this grant, and by, um, implication, I guess, uh, that the language that is required, that is, uh, that Debbie has in her possession, be read in to the minutes as being, uh, approved by this committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor? Opposed? Okay, unanimous. All right, fiscal year ten budget final report.
I think you have.
Yeah.
The, the grant you just approved applying for is part of a, not to do this green, uh, construction initiative. Um, if we were planning on doing major renovations on any of these buildings, we would not apply for this, 'cause it'd take us out of the running for the major money that the MSBA usually puts out. So we wouldn't apply for Wildwood, Port River. But, in the middle school, we don't have any major things coming up that we need MSBA money for, but it does leak like a sieve. So this is a perfect, uh, project to go after, uh, and should we be awarded this project, there's a lot of interest in this, in this pot of money, then we'll get to talk about how we're gonna fund our portion of it and so forth. So, thank, thank you for passing that. So... ...that we need MSBA money for, but it does leak like a sieve. So this is a perfect, um, project to go after, uh, and should we be awarded this project, there's a lot of interest in this, in this pot of money, then we'll get to talk about how we're gonna fund our portion of it and so forth. So, thank, thank you for passing that. So, September, it's time to say goodbye to last year. Um, I wanna give you this report and show you where we ended up. Uh, no surprise, we ended up, uh, in the black. We've been running in the black all year, uh, with a good surplus. Um, and we closed, uh, in a fortunate position of being able to return two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to E and D from this budget. Fortunate, because in the spring, as you recall, we agreed to use two hundred and fifty-five thousand for E and D to fund this year's budget. So, that worked out fairly well for us. Um, I'm not, it's late, I'm not gonna read through this whole thing, this gives you an indication of what went well, what didn't go well. Um, the biggest boon we got was in utilities. A, the rates we got, we locked in early, were very favorable, and B, as you know, it was a really warm winter. So that, that was huge for us. Um, transportation, um, we allocate costs based on the actual models of ridership. We project based on this year's busing patterns, that things shift when, uh, the kids show up. So there's no, there's no variability there. The other big piece of that, of course, is, again, low fuel costs went down quite a bit. And salaries went down, uh, fair amount ninety-nine thousand less than we budgeted, um, because of unfilled positions, some of which were picked up by long-term subs, as you see those sublines going up and so forth. Um, I do wanna point out that some of the over-budget, we were over-budget one hundred and forty-six thousand in other programs, and that is charter school assessment, fifty thousand. Um, hopefully, running very well, and some of our previous funding reports been really well, but we ended up only like four thousand months under budget there, so, um, another place where we ran into a little deficit was fifteen thousand dollars from Kenny Venter Transportation for homeless students. There's a lot of these little variable things that happen each year. Um, but again, this year, I think we ended up really doing quite well, and I'm very happy with that. So, without bothering you too much more, give me questions I could answer.
We're in control.
Catherine, go ahead.
Um, thanks, this is very helpful. So I guess, I'm concerned about the charter school assessment that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than projected. So I'm wondering, how many kids is that, and do we know what grades it was, and, and I guess I'm concerned that it's higher than projections, 'cause I'm sure that you already projected that some kids were gonna go.
Yes.
So this is indicating that more kids went than we anticipated.
Right.
And so do we have a sense of how many kids that is, and, and do we have a sense of a more accurate projection in the future, 'cause that does seem like a lot.
Yes, it is. Um, I know exactly what they are, I just don't have it in my head.
Sure.
I'd be happy to email it to you.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
So, so, so then...
Yeah.
So were you, so you'll tell us how many kids that is, but I guess my, my other question is that...
I'd say variance between budget projection and actual.
But so then, but so then we're also off in projections, 'cause we anticipated some would leave for charter schools, and it, it could be leave, or it could be never attend, right? It could be seventh graders who don't ever enter our schools, right?
Yes.
Okay, or it could be kids who've already been in our schools and have opted out for a private, for a charter school.
Yeah.
So, so do we have a sense of, of why we were off? I mean, I guess that, you know, if we were off by a hundred and fifty continually, that, I'm just trying to get a sense of the accuracy of those projections.
In region, I don't know. Usually, a kid will stick in a charter, um, and you'll see some trickle back for a senior year.
But this takes into account, I assume, kids who've returned.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, so any kids who've returned are being, are, we're counting those kids as, as returned.
Yes, right.
And this is, so this is above and beyond any net increase in, of return that we might have had. We're still at a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's right, that's right. I'd give you that whole analysis, see, you know, what grades, you know, how it varies from projections, so forth.
That'd be useful, I don't know if other members of the committee would like it, I'd be interested in having it, for sure. Thanks.
And, and it is surprising in region, because this is a fairly stable group.
Well, that, I mean, elementary, the Chinese charter school, yeah, but, but basically, it's PVPA? Is it basically PVPA?
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So, I, I have two quick ones. So, we're, it's a vocational, um, school for this current year is gonna be quite low. It's my understanding, only one of our students is going to Smith Oak, is that right?
Oh, no.
No.
Oh, it's more.
Yeah.
Oh, because Kathy Mazer talked about it at the meeting, she said, this year is gonna be unusually low.
I don't have the actual enrollments for this year yet. Again, the magic data, that is October one. Um, but I haven't seen any kids coming back.
Okay, so there's, no, I meant, I meant entering, say, first-time goers for ninth grade.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what she said was one. And so I'm wondering, do we know, we don't really know yet, so we'll find out October first. And I guess the, the, the second thing is, could you remind us what control accounts are?
Control accounts, okay, sure. So, we have in there a provision for maternity leave. There's a provision for a thousand dollars for clerical award, which you see I just spent there, a thousand dollars I could've spent in those control accounts. Um, there's a provision for, uh... You start out with adds and cuts in there, um, but the bigger the you say, the one fifty-one, uh, probably, most of that is a provision for, uh, a teacher and two paras, and provision for salary increases to non-unit staff. Much like that. Yeah.
You provided an excellent, um, report on the components of the control accounts, but you haven't defined control accounts. Indeed, what are, what is, or constitutes a control account, or the control account?
So, the, the, the accounts that are in that category are, um, amounts that we either are contractually obligated, but we don't know who's gonna claim them yet. For our example, um, we're, uh, contractually obligated to reimburse certain, um, staff members for, um, a life insurance policy. Now, you would think that'd be a normal benefit, but the way the contracts are read is that we will be, we would reimburse them. As it turns out, these individuals never claimed, or they haven't claimed this reimbursement in several years, yet, because of the contractual obligation, it's there waiting for them to, like, claim it, okay? All of these things are expenses that you can reasonably expect to incur, but you don't know if you actually will incur them, or if so, in what line. Maternity leave, you can reasonably expect to have to have additional expense for maternity leave, you just don't know what department it's gonna be in, or what salary it's gonna be.
So would that be synonymous with a contingency account? You're talking about contingent expenses, but...
Yes, so some of them would be contingencies, and some of them are contractual obligations. Yeah.
Um, I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify, you know, actually, I think the Chinese charter school is now taking seventh graders.
Yeah.
So that's actually something that would be new.
Right.
Right? I mean, that's, 'cause I had forgotten about that, but I believe they are now taking seventh graders as well. So that may be, but, but I think that information would be useful to have, because that, I believe then next year they'll take eighth graders.
Probably.
Yeah.
So, uh, when they open seventh grade, uh, kids preregister for going to a charter school. That happens, and I think it's February. By February, March, we have a report as to how many kids have preregistered, in which grade, in which charter school from our district. And we use that as the basis for projecting our charter school experience for the following year.
So that could be wrong, too, right?
Yeah, there's people on the waiting list, people change their minds, but that's what we base as a basis for our budget projections.
Thanks.
A couple of things that I think might follow to, uh, Erv's question. Um, when I receive a copy of the proposed budget for FY twelve, will, will the control account be broken down into specific subcategories, or is that possible to do?
No, that, you will. Uh, there are individual account lines, that I mentioned, some of them, uh, maternity leave, uh...
And we identify that way?
Yeah, yeah.
And to the committee, um, this charter school business is, is really quite, um, scary. It's a lot of money. Um, and I think they're sending us a signal. Um, you hear a lot of talk about people voting with their feet, and I don't know how political the committee wants to get, but it seems to me that we should do something in terms of informing, um, Representative Story, Senator Rosenberg, in our case, Representative Culek, about how the current, um, charter school, um, legislation is impacting us. The second point I wanna make is that, um, I've heard a lot of talk over the last twelve months, eighteen months, about the lack of rigor, um, at the, the regional level, and I'm wondering if it, I'm not saying that that's not an issue, but I'm wondering if people are voting with their feet, not because of the lack of rigor, but because of the lack of content, um, the lack of curriculum that's attractive to people, specifically in terms of languages, performing arts, the visual arts, what have you. With budget cuts, how much have we, have we decimated those programs so much, that people are telling us with their feet that we don't wanna stay?
Any more discussion? Okay, let's move on to, uh, accept gifts. So, I need a, so the gifts here, I need a motion to accept, excuse us, Catherine.
I, I move to accept four gifts. Can I do it in the block, is that mine? Debbie?
Yeah, that's, that's...
There we go. I move to accept four gifts. Um, Target Take Charge of Education, sixty-seven ninety-seven to the middle school, the principal's discretion, Target Take Charge of Education, five hundred and sixteen dollars and twelve cents to the high school, the principal's discretion, five hundred dollars from the Community Foundation of Western Massachusetts for the backpack project, and fifty dollars from the Amherst Regional Middle School PGO to, for the first day celebration ban. Do I have a second?
Second. Any discussion, alls in favor? I don't, I'm gonna propose that we don't do anything on this district improvement plan tonight, 'cause if, if we're gonna do anything decent, it requires a big discussion. tonight, because if we're going to do anything decent, it requires a big discussion. We have the plan, so we can look at it in detail for discussion next time. Just a question from Maria. Is it okay, would it help you in terms of presenting next time, if we were to email you comments, observations about it? Is that okay?
Yeah, they've been very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I have a question, given that we're doing this very differently this year than we were last year. I'm just not sure what this document represents, to be honest with you. I mean, I see something like a mission statement in there, I don't, you know, I don't know if that's taken as a distribution statement, or if that was something that the superintendent put in the document. But more, but wait, Rick. I think the bigger issue is, is that I think that we as a committee set goals for the coming year, that, you know, that are those goals upon which we evaluate the superintendent. And I guess this document seems complicated, because superintendent has put a lot of time into this, and effort, and thought. And it would be odd for us to say, you know, to come up with a situation in which we said, well, our goals are totally different, and we're not going to judge you on this, we're going to judge you on something else. Which is why I kind of regret the fact that we didn't do the process similar to last year, because I thought it was a great process last year. So I think that it would be useful to have at least a couple minutes discussion. I know we'd like to leave, but to try to make sure that we as a committee have an understanding of whether this is, this is just the laid-out district strategies for something that we may inform the superintendent we're not interested in. Because I think it's important for the superintendent to participate in our goal-setting discussions, because, you know, ultimately, that, you know, that that's part of a collaborative nature of this. So I guess, I guess I'd just like some information.
My understanding from discussions that I think, I don't know if we had in the wide committee or not, that there would be a subcommittee or a task force of the school committee that would work with me around goal-setting from the school committee's perspective, that I would then be evaluated on. This document, what it is, is a document that superintendents, whether they put it in writing and give to the public, it's really kind of the work plan of a district. So it may be the same, or it may not be the same, as the goals that you provided. What it was for me, is the district's mission statement that was voted upon. And it reflects the vision and the work that the staff are involved in now, and where we're going, and the activities or the outcomes or objectives, or, you know, sub-goals, however you like to describe, in this document is not exhaustive. You know, so if you have a larger overarching goal that talks about achievement of students or teaching and learning, these are a few strategies that we're going to be employing to move us toward that. But there are many, many strategies that the school committee may identify that would fit in with this, or a maybe totally separate subset of goals. So I guess that was, I don't know if that helps.
Steve and not Kristin.
Okay, then I guess what I would ask is, I guess I move that the chairs and vice-chairs of the Amherst and regional school committees.
And Pellam.
And Pellam, right?
Right.
Was it the chair and vice-chair of Pellam, or just the chair of Pellam?
It was just the chair last year, wasn't it?
Was it just one in Pellam, or was that a?
On the, it was just me.
Just you?
As chair, you were chair, right?
I was not chair.
She was not chair.
The chair and vice-chair is of region and Amherst, I think the chair of Pellam would form the superintendent, the goals and evaluation subcommittee, and would, and we tasked them to put together those goals, and that they should get started as soon as possible.
Okay, that's I think what you want.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Not bad.
Sorry, I should call attention to that one.
Who's next?
Oh. We already did. You know, Maria described it correctly, in terms of how and the assumptions that I have and other members have, that this was a district improvement plan, and that this is something almost like an entry plan for the superintendent. This would be something that would be discussed by the committee. However, the separate issue item would be evaluation and goals and objectives that the school committee would have for the superintendent, and what she, that what she would then be evaluated on. And that's, that, some of that would, might, in some way, reflect this document, but it may not. But some of it might. So superintendent did describe it correctly.
So it's Kristin, Debbie, and Catherine, but there's a motion that hasn't been seconded.
Oh, I second that. Well, I, no, I didn't, but, I mean, I don't think I did. Did I? I could. Why don't you say that I did?
No one seconded.
Could I now, could I now second?
Sure. All right, so Kristin.
Yeah, can I hear the motion? I had actually erased it, but I thought we were going to go to it later. Basically, as Mr. Rifkin made a motion, that the chair and vice-chair of the Amherst and regional school committees, and the chair of the Pellam school committee, form a subcommittee to develop superintendent.
Goals and evaluation? A goals, maybe it was a goals and evaluations subcommittee?
Subcommittee.
As soon as possible. As soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
That's it. And we'll second it if our captain, so.
I guess I just want to, you know, speak, we spoke earlier that most of us are not educational professionals, and I would just remind us that, that the goals, this district plan, this improvement plan, is bubbling up from the people who are working with kids, who are professionals in this field, and it sets goals. And I see this, this is common, this is typical, this is what you do, and so, in education. And so I think, you know, these are a set of goals that are about improving the academics of the district, that have come from the professionals in the district. I see our job as evaluating whether the superintendent leads an appropriate process by which these goals come to fruition. Certainly, the school committee may have a few different goals, but I want to caution us from laying on a whole nother set of goals that are, that would take the administration and the teaching staff away from the district improvement plan, that they have carefully developed from the bottom up. So I just, I understand that we do need goals. We have certain goals we want to get out, but I would caution us from not, not to move so far away, or add too much onto the district improvement plan.
I support the motion to form that committee. And I guess I agree with Superintendent Garrett's view about our goals, the school committee's goals could include some of the same, all of the same, some different ones, some combination. And I felt last year, I had the opportunity to participate on the goals and evaluations subcommittee, and I thought it was a really effective group, because it actually was a combination of Dr. Rodriguez's thoughts, and all school committee members' thoughts. To me, and with all due respect to Kristin's view about the educational professionals that put this together, I feel that my role is to hear from the community, and I think we talked a lot about community in this. And so to me, I'd like to hear from the community about what they'd like to see in this school in the upcoming year. And so to me, last year, we heard from an upper parent that there were concerns about the middle school. That was like goal number four on the district goals that we had. And in fact, that led to the hiring of Dr. Beers, and it led to what I believe is a middle school parent now, you know, some really important changes. So I guess I feel like that's really, you know, that's really important. There was a goal last year about, at the Amherst level, about redistricting, and that was, you know, very important. And I also see it as the community is then endorsing these goals via us. I think any member of this community certainly in their right to choose goals that are already laid out in this, in this extensive, extensive list from there. And in terms of Debbie's point about the composition, I just want to be very clear that I don't think it matters so much who the composition is, as much as, we don't spend a huge amount of time discussing it, and chairs and vice-chairs are sort of easy, but let's be very clear about two things. One, these are all posted meetings, so every, so Kathleen Anderson was not the chair or vice-chair of Amherst or region last year, but I believe she attended all the meetings and participated, and her views were noted. So I think it's very important to note that this is not the situation in which these are posted meetings, in which not only all members of our committees could go, but also members of the public could go. Two, whatever goals whoever is in that meeting come up with, they have to be endorsed by the whole committee. So if the goals committee goes out on their own, and comes up with some goals, and they bring them back, and we're like, no, that's not it, it doesn't work. So I guess I think that the intent is that, given that it is late September, I think we could have some goals, and I think that would be fair to the superintendent, frankly. And so I would, I do think there is some urgency to scheduling it, and I would think it would be appropriate for all members of the committee to communicate their thoughts about what those goals should be to any of the chairs or vice-chairs, and/or to attend the meetings. And I look forward to an active and productive discussion about that. I think it would be really invigorating for the community.
Kip and Nora, but Debbie.
I think there may be a slight problem with the makeup of the committee. If you have the chair, vice-chair of Amherst, chair, vice-chair of region, and chair of Pellam, you have a quorum of the regional school committee.
Yeah, we, that's why we said we're going to post it, and that obviously is a concern.
But you would have to post it as a regional school committee.
And an Amherst school committee.
And then you have, you have a.
It's true.
You wouldn't have a quorum of Amherst or Pellam, but you would have a quorum of region.
You would have a quorum of Amherst.
You would have.
You would have a quorum of Amherst.
Definitely.
Because Rick is double.
We would have, we would, that does pose a giant problem.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't think you can do it.
No.
No. I think you have, I don't think you can have that kind of makeup.
So then, so then it could be, it could be all the chairs, but anybody can go. I mean, right? That's fine, right? I mean, again, I think the important thing is that it's scheduled, and then everybody can go.
So we need an amendment to, well, first it was Kip, and then Nora.
Very good. I sort of see this document, first of all, thank you. I think it's really very detailed and very informative, and I saw it as a, as kind of an organic document, one that is going to change and shift and move around as things happen or things don't happen. So I think there can certainly be an opportunity for more input, and also subtractions from this. Secondly, and even more importantly, for me personally, is that when I look at this, it provides sort of a narrative window onto what the staff is doing over the course of the next year, which is something that we don't often have an opportunity to do. And third, and finally, and I don't know if it's correctly, but for me, it will also inform my thinking about the budget, because apart from the instructional program, if we're going to approve this document, we want to make sure we also provide adequate resources so they can do the job that we're asking them to do.
Nora was next, unless you?
I just want to quickly also commend Maria and your staff for putting this together, because it's really informative for me. I want to remind everybody that it's a three-year projection, and also agree with Kristin and others who've spoken, that I think it should inform, strongly inform the goals for this year.
Sure.
You okay?
No, I'm just hoping for the amendment, but I have a question about it. Go ahead.
Just one comment, I want to agree, excuse me, totally with Catherine about the public input, and would welcome more. We were very fortunate that we had, from our survey, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven responses, and I think it was well over three-hundred of those were parents. So not that that make, the survey may not have been perfect, and kind of pulled with some of those topics that Catherine was mentioning, because it gave a specific, and then said any other comments you have. So maybe there would be a follow-up or some other conversations, but it was, I really, really appreciate it. People gave great feedback, which did inform what you see today.
I would make the amendment, but I have a question about it again, pretending to open meeting law. So if you make it the three chairs, and a quorum of the regional committee shows up, what happens then?
They're not, they're not part of the committee that's meeting, so I don't, I don't believe that's a problem with regard to opening meetings.
That must happen in policy, I'm sure it happens in legal services.
It doesn't. They can't contribute to this conversation, because it moves the debate further.
That's right, I remember that from other chapters.
I have that here somewhere.
They could lift them today or later, too. Even if we can open.
Because we can't all just show up at a bar and start talking about stuff either.
It was a very, it was a very specific, we were very conscious of that during the redistricting, that if, we had a very specific subcommittee, and if other people came, they couldn't contribute, or call back.
I'm happy not to come, Heather.
Actually, me too.
Right, so we get, you know, we get a couple of other, because I trust the chairs of Amherst, region, and Pellam to take the input of the committee, because they're not going to want to go out and spend a lot of time meeting, and to have us come back and say, no, that's not what we want. So I would trust them to do it, and I think that maybe we just. I think that one person from either Kip, or Nora, or Kristin could show up, that that would be it.
Not Nora.
Not, oh, not Nora. But maybe it's better if it's just those three, and that's it. I move to amend Steve's motion to make the makeup of the subcommittee, the chairs of the regional school committee, the Amherst school committee, and the Pellam school committee.
Second.
Hi, any discussion?
I'm going to call the question on the amendment.
Second. Okay, all is in favor of calling the question. So come to immediate vote on the amendment, all is in favor. Okay, pass unanimously.
Call the question on the, on the motion.
I'll second that.
Let me just do it?
No, 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 we passed the amendment, we haven't passed the motion.
Oh. Sorry, it's getting me.
So I'm seconding calling the question on the main motion.
Okay, all is in favor of calling. Okay, unanimous, come to immediate vote on that motion, all is in favor.
Yeah, there's a lot of. Sorry, just one quick question to Maria, because I think, I really appreciate that survey that you did, and I would love to see, I mean, not like the formal results, but sort of just if you could let us know what you heard from the community. I think that'd be really, really helpful.
Yeah, I'll have to look at, and try to figure out, maybe people can give me some input into how I might do that in a way that would be, you know, I don't know, how to put it together so it would be meaningful for you, you know, I'd be happy to have that input. Sure.
Okay, so we just did the, which is good. If we could real quickly do E, it would be nice, because all that is, is just saying that we have a task force of basically citizens who would try to submit their name to Debbie, to be on a, to be on a task force, to just look into the pros and cons of late start, and then present that to us at some point in the future.
Just for point of information, I believe you're also, would also be looking for school committee representation on the task force, or not?
I don't think it matters. It could be, but it doesn't have to be. So we don't actually have to vote on this, I don't think, because, we can if we want, but.
Well, no, I don't have to vote or not, I think it, I think it seems, I mean, I think that we should not vote on it unless we think that there is some interest, because telling a bunch of people, as volunteers go out and investigate some stuff, to come back, and then all of us say, no, there's no way that would happen. I mean, so I think it should not just be a casual, it's ten-ten, let's vote. I mean, I think that voting it should say that there is some legitimate interest on this committee in doing that, and I guess I also think in fairness to random community volunteers, they would, they would need some kind of a charge. I mean, so I don't think we want to get into the practice of, like, people who come with them, they were, sure, go and investigate that, and whatever. So I think in terms of being respectful to the community, maybe we could have a two-minute discussion, saying, do we think this is something that, that we believe should be investigated further? And maybe we could develop a very brief, and if we did, we could develop a very brief charge to that committee of the kinds of things that we're interested in, whether it's educational, or fiscal, or logistical, or whatever. I just think it would be more respectful, and I think we should expect that if we charge people to do this, we're going to get something back, and I just think that's appropriate. So I'm not taking a position on it, I'm just saying, I think in terms of the process, we should have a minute or two.
Debbie, and Steve, and I.
So I think it's a great idea to have this task force, and would absolutely support it. I think it's important for the task force to look at all of the elements that Catherine just mentioned. I also would personally want the task force to look at districts that have done this already, and maybe through them, learn, learn from people who've already been through this process, and find out what some of the pitfalls were, stumbling blocks, you know, if we are to move forward with it, just to give us that kind of information up in front, I think would be really helpful. And also, if they have any sort of sense of success or not, of changing to a later start time.
Steve? I just wanted to, and I agree, too, this is worth studying, but I think what's very important is that the administration is going to have to participate, because, because some of these issues are sort of Amherst-specific, region-specific, and, you know, whether it's athletics, or, you know, or the bus, the bus cost and agreements we've reached. Because there may be roadblocks to this that are beyond our control, and I would hate this, to have a lot of, people spend a lot of time doing research on something that's a non-issue, that's not a possibility. So I would think we should charge, you know, if we want to charge the task force, we should first find out, you know, whether it's feasible, and then find out, you know, then have information brought to bear, so that we can have a serious discussion about whether it's desirable.
Before we charge the task force?
No, no, that the task force, they have a sort of two-step process. They would first, they would first have a, have a quick study of how much this would cost to do various, you know, maybe, maybe two reasonable iterations of, not iterations, but possibilities of this, and working with the administration, perhaps come back to us with that report, and then have us decide whether, whether it should go further.
I would like to make a motion that we have a task force that represents the school, represented from the school committee and community and administration, and that that task force be charged with, with coming up with, the, coming up with information that will advise the school committee as to whether we should in fact change to a later start date. I know, it's, 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 the task force is, is to gather information, present that information back to the school committee, and that information obviously has to include cost, benefit, et cetera.
Second, is that the motion right? Second?
Yes.
Can I just?
Go ahead.
I just want to make a cautionary statement, that we're entering, I just don't know how much time this would take to do this study, but we're entering into budget cycle where we're asking Rob in particular, who would have, have a hand in this conversation, to revamp and present a whole new budget structure, and we're heading into superintendent search and negotiations. So I just want us to be cautious with how much we're grabbing, so I maybe, I'm not opposed.
Right, and I, and I guess, you know, I didn't, I didn't see that as something that we would certainly be looking at to be implementing during the next school year. I don't, I don't, because of what you just said, there's just too much on our plate. But we need to start.
I just, I wanted to say two things. One, I do, I do support the motion, I think there has been interest in it among parents. I, and I do frankly feel it would be appropriate to have a school committee representative, because I do think that it would, it would facilitate, I mean, even to the extent that that person could uptake this committee on this status, or whatever. So it strikes me, it also gives, I think, greater legitimacy that we've had school committee representation on other major committees, like equity in the elementary schools at the Amherst level. So I do think school committee representation would be important, and so we should be mindful that, I think one of us should volunteer to serve. The other thing I think is important, though, is that I think this really needs to come also at Amherst, and also I imagine at Pellam, because I could imagine that from the regional perspective, there might be interest in it, because seventh graders through 12th graders could sleep later. I could also imagine there could be feelings among elementary school parents, that delay in the start of school might be undesirable in terms of work schedules. So I think it would be important to have this also, make sure that we're discussing it, not just at a regional, at Amherst, and I would imagine at Pellam, we might have similar issues.
Kip, and Debbie.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against the motion at this time. I simply think it's much too important an issue for us to consider at 10-20. Not that I don't necessarily agree with it, I just simply think that we need to think it through, particularly in the context of everything else that we're going to need to do over the course of the next four months, in particular. Negotiations is not a trivial matter, budget is not a trivial matter, and the superintendent searches are not something that's trivial. And I think, for me, to make this decision tonight, is just premature. It's not that I don't want to make it, I don't support it, I just don't want to make it tonight.
Debbie, please.
Yeah, actually, Kip kind of makes a good point, because something Catherine said just struck me, because I actually thought we were talking about a later start time at the high school, which would probably imply an earlier start time at elementary, but I thought you just said a later start time at elementary also, so maybe I'm not even sure we're all talking about the same thing.
That was, he had made, he had made two points. One point was swapping them, but the other point was delaying it by 30 minutes at both, at both.
At both ends. So we're a point, we, what we're talking about is the task force to look at both of those options.
Those were the two options that he talked about.
A made up third option.
Those seem like, but, so yeah, so it's not clear to me, right? Because one of them would swap them, but one of them would just delay.
I mean, that's, yeah.
Because of the bus, I mean, so if you delay the Amherst, if you delay the high school, then because the bus would sink.
But we need to be clear on what, I mean, are we just sort of throwing it out there? Look at start times, do whatever you want to look at, or are we going to define it more?
Those two options, to me, would seem like the right ones to think about. One would be swapping it, and one would be a delay. So to me, those would be the two options that would make sense, and I think they're the two options that they've identified. We've, we've gotten a fair amount of information on this, Kip, from this, from this group of parents, probably before you were on the committee, but we've gotten emails, I mean, I'd say for months, right? Months, so.
Call the question. Second. All those in favor of calling a question? Opposed. Okay, we'll come to the immediate vote on the motion. Do you need the motion right back?
Task force, it's the point of task force.
Mr. Rhodes made a motion for a task force to be established with representation from the public school committee administration and administration, that will be charged with gathering information on the possibility of implementing a later start time for presentation to the school committee.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? One, one opposed, one abstained. Okay, it's 10-20, and we didn't vote to go beyond 10. How about just the subcommittee, subcommittee reports, and maybe adjourn?
Can I just make a suggestion around the district improvement plan? If I bring it to the, the goal subcommittee and top of you, all about this document, and you guys can determine with the committee how much you want me to go into this and full committee, I would do whatever you guys want me to do, but I'll bring it and explain my thought process and what we're focusing on, and then you can decide.
I think it's a great idea. I second that, that was the motion.
Well, I don't think I can make that.
Well, I would support that totally.
Debbie.
Who's, who's going to call the goal subcommittee meeting?
I'll get, I will with you.
So I just had a question about the budget subcommittee, because I thought we were on that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I thought we were discussing, maybe I'm just wrong, I thought we were discussing C-BAC. Is that the same as the budget subcommittee, or is it not? So we're not discussing C-BAC?
Okay.
Okay.
So budget subcommittee update, Debbie and Irv, you can help me out here, but the two big things we, well, two of the things we discussed last time are line item budget format. Rob's been working on that, and probably will be showing us something at the next budget subcommittee meeting, which is next week, I believe, and hopefully at the next school committee, the regional meeting will be presented, a new format on that. Another thing discussed was the cost sharing between Pellam, region, and Amherst, that whole issue. Rob's reworking that to present something new to us at the next budget subcommittee meeting. Others, things, Debbie or Irv?
One, can I, one thing we talked a little bit about was the ed jobs money, and that S, whatever, whatever initials, and I didn't have Rob prepare that for today, for the subcommittee, because I thought we were, I mean, for this committee, because I thought we were too packed, and there's not a, a rule in that, so I, I didn't have him prepare it. That's okay.
And those two items, definitely the whole committee needs to hear about, know about, ed job money, the, I don't know if I have a better term, RTT money, all of that, and how that money is going to be expended, the recommendations that the budget committee is going to be recommending back to the full committee to vote upon in terms of expenditures of those funds. The, the also, to inform the committee about the capital expenditures and plan that is going to be brought forward, which is one, forward to next year, not just next fiscal year, which is a very important thing, and, and it's a first-time thing, it's historical. So all of those things will be brought forward by the budget subcommittee to the full committee at another point in time.
Okay. Can I motion to adjourn, maybe?
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I just have two things. One, is somebody going to contact the law firms and let them know the, the result, because we do have a number of firms that interviewed and spent time, and I think it'd be appropriate for us to thank them for their interest, and, so I don't know if that would be Rick, or Irv, I just think it'd be kind.
Right, right, Rick, I think you should, as chair, that you should contact and thank them, et cetera.
Contact the firms that we didn't select, and, you know, whatever, and I guess I would also confirm interest on both firms in doing that. I just wanted to say for upcoming, items for upcoming agenda meetings, which I appreciate that list, could we add C-BAC? Because my understanding was we did discuss C-BAC, and that we, that we had people who were going to do something, and, and I think that was going to be like under a budget. So I just think C-BAC is, was useful, and we, I think we talked a lot about having them come back and do something, and, and it could be timely with.
Well, brief update, I can't remember when we discussed this, but I was supposed to contact them and see if they're interested. I have one, yes, and so that's the problem. So basically, no, pretty much nobody wants to do it, we did it before, so we have to decide what we want to do, you know, do we solicit members to form an approval?
I just have a question. We also chose a search consultant tonight. I mean, do you want me to contact them and get things started, I mean, or you guys are going to do it?
Yeah.
But I think, but I think that there has to be a sort of, I, probably Rob, but somebody has to make the formal arrangement that they've been accepted, and that there has to be contracts signed.
Yeah.
Rob has to do that.
Rob has to do that.
While we connect with Rob, and we can.
So you will contact them tomorrow and let them know that they've been selected, and then, and Rob will contact them with the, with the information about, about signing contract.
Right. Question on the science, the discussion, what's the projected outcome of that discussion? Is there an intended outcome?
Yeah, maybe I can, I can speak to that. I think this has been a discussion that people have wanted for a long time, and I think it would be very healthy to have an education discussion about this. I think it's a discussion that should have happened, because when you select a science curriculum, it has, it's a major decision, and it was a discussion that never occurred. And I think that there are, there is going to be a science review coming, and I think that it's important to, to allow the community to discuss the pros and cons of the overall structure of our science program. We as a school committee could actually insert ourselves into this if we so chose, and make policy about this. This is something that is in our authority. So I think it's an important issue for us to discuss, and I think it could be a very healthy discussion, because rather than be, you know, rather than being arguing about things in, you know, in the abstract, or there being dissatisfaction that this can never be discussed in public, and there's sort of a wall up, that this could actually happen, and I think people have wanted it, and I think several school committee members[1734.62]